I may just dig the order. June 11th, 2025. Approved the agenda, recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for June the 11th, 2025 be approved as circulated. Counselor Rich, Counselor Evans, all in favor? Thank you. Adoption of minutes, recommendation of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on May the 28th, 2025 be adopted. Counselor McCabe, Counselor Bushell, thank you. Hey, we're missing a couple of delegations to start, so we're going to jump a little bit forward to department updates. So we're going to get the Sicamous Community Health Center update from Karen. If you're ready to go. Perfect.
I think I have a lot of building with Jared and Fraser before we came, so I know they're here. Anyway. So, good afternoon, everybody. Through the chair. This is, happy to say this is the last update of that picture that we'll be using. So, excited times ahead for sure. So, we continue to see strong growth in the patient population and overall service delivery. In the last six months, the attached patient population went from 3357 to 3556, which is 6% interest or increase in just six months. And that kind of flattened out a little bit because when Dr. Tangle first came over or came in, he increased by about 15% in the first few months. So it's flattened a tiny bit, but it's still growth. But it also is 124% increase as the district required the practice four years ago. So all the practitioners are taking new patients. And most of that has come through the traditional attachment system, which is actually a really group where you can do it or. So, total visits since the December update are 9252. Walk-ins slowed a little bit, but that's typical in that time, for that time period. Certainly wrapping up now. And telehealth is always very strong and comprises 20% of overall visits. Telehealth and virtual care, like have, you know, the usage has significantly, significantly increased since March 2020. And that is core, like telehealth, you know, is pretty self-explanatory. It allows patients to connect with healthcare providers in the middle of time without being in the same physical space. But virtual care is more than just a phone call. You know, we can connect patients with virtual clinics. Or specialists on a virtual basis or video clinic, virtual as well. And then, I mentioned this before, but I'm there mentioning again, real-time virtual support or TBS. It offers enhanced physician-to-physician support, connecting rural and remote dogwood and experienced specialists if you assume. On or phone in real time. So it covers critical areas like emergency medicine, pediatrics, internal medicine, and maternity care. So for a physician facing a complex or unfamiliar case, immediate support from a colleague can make a big difference. Like calling a friend in some cases. strengthens not only individual practitioners, but also entire communities by supporting local care delivery, reducing unnecessary patient travel, and improving physician confidence and retention in all areas. We are members of B Catch and C Catch. C Catch is a community health center and B Catch is a BC Association of Community Health Centers. These associations are really wonderful and they foster collaboration, learning, and systemic improvement. B Catch has recently implemented a community of practice, which is a peer-driven, peer-driven network for Indigenous health centers. And it's focused on sharing knowledge, resources, and addressing shared challenges. Those conversations are always really, really interesting and it's a real diverse group of people with diverse experience. So it's always very rich. There's also an interior region community of practice and that falls under the Rural Coordination Center, but it's the Rural, what is it, Continuing Medical Education Program. So this is a new group and they're working toward clear communication and consistent processes between community health centers and interior health. The goals are to have equitable access to resources and funding and better support for CHC improvement efforts. And another goal is the recognition of CHCs as partners, not just as service providers. Our free hearing clinic, Demos Papadopoulos from Chuchua Hearing, has provided four clinics in the last year, or so far this year, and the community response has been excellent. And we're really excited to see Demos and the team at the health center. The final stretch, here we are. Seems hard to believe that we're in the final stretch of the SICMAS Sicamous Health Center. This is a really transformational project. The building is nearly complete. Medical equipment arrived last week, as did the appliances. And just this morning, chairs for the exam rooms and the reception area arrived. So it's really fun to see it start to come together. It's the week next, be working on artwork and photography and that kind of thing. It's a big push for the next step. Our amazing MOA team has been diligently scanning all legacy safer charts to ensure that none remain to move. Although we have tons of storage space, none of them are going to be used for old funds. So that is just wrong. All tenant spaces have been allocated with the exception of the unfinished third-party unit in the Southwest quadrant. We're also reserving one exam room within the Allied Health Hub for the interior health primary care team, primary care network team. And should that change, we have several other interested parties ready to step into that space. So the integrated space will bring allied health, primary care, social programs, and traditional indigenous healing under one roof. Confirmed tenants and community features include allied health services, including physiotherapy, massage therapy, and acupuncture, mental health support, perinatal and lactation, and also a veterinary clinic. There's the dedicated center for traditional indigenous healing, where the vision to incorporate First Nations traditions, healing practices, and partnerships between traditional healers and life-threatening medical providers. And also a flexible community space for wellness programming, education, local initiatives, and wider events. The SICMAS Health Center marks a major step forward in regional care, offering a truly integrated, culturally grounded approach. There'll be a natural learning curve as our team grows to this new model. So we're really fortunate to have access to multiple resources and initiatives to support the transition, including the communities of practice, which I talked about earlier. And there's really great programs through our CCBC and Health Excellence Canada. And there's other funding operations or funding sources that I'll be exploring to really get the team-based care initiative underway and really well. And critical to note, the TRC calls Action 1824, speak directly to health and recognition of indigenous healing practices and knowledge systems. These are deeply important to how we envision the center. From the outset, we've been intentional in designing the space elaborately, creating a place that can support culturally safe care and indigenous-led programming. We believe firmly that programming must be led and shaped by indigenous voices, not of laws discerning. At the moment, we are in a respectful holding pattern, awaiting direction from Slough Chain of First Nations Communities. We recognize partnership can't be rushed or assumed. We're ready and committed to engaging when invited, or maintaining the integrity of the space and vision in the meantime. We're also guided by the principle of two-eyed seeing, which calls us to bring together both indigenous and Western perspectives to address wellness and health in a more complete, respectful, and effective ways. At this stage, we are honoring the timelines, protocols, and processes of the First Nations communities that we will walk alongside. Our rule now is to hold space with care and humility. Ready to listen, ready to adapt, and committed to ensuring that when engagement happens, it's on their terms, in a way that requires collaborative cooperation. We look forward to welcoming our community and neighboring communities into this innovative space and continuing to build a strong, inclusive, and resilient health system. And it takes time, but I promise you that the outcome of all the invested time and resources will be significant. And I just received this last night from the BC Rural Health Network, so I added it in at the last moment. This is a partnership with RCCBC, Health Research BC, and the Rural Health Services Research Network of BC. And it's offering a free live event on managing extreme weather events, and this is this Saturday morning online. This timing session features a panel of leaders with lived experience in rural crisis response. Virtual community scenario will engage participants in hands-on planning and comparative activities. Youth and student participation is highly encouraged. You can register via the URL on the attached image and reach out to me directly and I will forward you. Any questions?
Thank you, Karen. Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a question on engagement with our indigenous partners. All along the process, during our concept, our design, our build, we've efforts to keep our indigenous partners engaged. With the lack of engagement, as I sense that there is, how does that impact costs? Because if you can't capture those costs during the build, is that going to increase our cost? What add-ons after our build? Also, how's the lack of engagement impacting our costs?
Don't think it is. I guess it's built.
And we've just made it very aware that whatever decisions we make have to be within our budget. So we're not going to be going outside of that. And just one thing, just to note, I don't think Karen, I'm not sure if you touched on the one picture. Just a little slide. This lovely medicine wheel here, the concrete contractor that Scott Builders had actually did this at no cost to us as just an add-on because they saw an opportunity here in the front. And Karen said, what about a medicine wheel? Very much goes with the theme of the building, so just a little plug on that.
Perfect, thank you, thanks. Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. First of all, just thank you and thank you to your guys' team again. Anyone who uses our system here in Sicamous knows it's a one or two day, if not same-day wait. We've got great doctors, we've got great folks up front, and it, very, very thankful for that because that's not, that is not normal for any community. And we have that, and that's, shout out to you guys for that one. Are we able to, well, I'm going to say Canada Day last year, I sliced my finger really badly putting up my flag and needed stitches, which then I chose not to go to the hospital. I just had someone else talk to me and they'd actually cut their hand and chose not to get the stitches. Is there a way we can advertise, and I don't know if we can, saying, you know what, we have this in Sicamous. So if your kid slices its knee open, or you're trying to put your flag up and you slice your finger, that honestly, call the medical clinic, see if they can get you in, that we do have qualified medical people there. It just seems to not, I didn't know, and I keep telling people, but I don't know if people know that like for minor stuff, you don't need to go to the hospital, that we have that walk-in availability.
Do people know that? We see a lot of it. We had a situation the other day where somebody from a local business was on a boat and basically almost severed his toes. And, you know, when he called, I said, you need to get to the hospital for that. But we're just down the block and I said, we might need some other people with attention right now. Brought him in, you know, Dr. Edison looked, sort of comforted him, we ate him a juice, he was kind of shocky and all that kind of thing. So people know. And the walk-in ability is really terrific. So, you know, I say never hesitate to make that call or just come in.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Karen. Yeah, I just want, like even our out-of-town guests that come, that that's a place to go, right? You don't need to go to the hospital, we can help you out.
And there's the Saturday clinic too, right? So that's always, try to get that out, that hour as much as possible. I mean, we do probably three or four rotations a year, or a year, and then, but we advertise on, like the poster on the clinic door. And so there's others, clinics, many clinics and seminars that take place, it's kind of a rotation. And so, you know, that's really well utilized and the whole idea is to take the pressure off the ER. And so there's that as well.
That's awesome, thank you, that's awesome.
Thanks, Karen.
Through the chair. Karen, thanks very much. That's a great presentation. Yeah, those are impressive numbers. Most that you guys have experienced over there and a great, you got a great team over there and keep up the great work and looking forward to the news facility. Might be a question for Dean, do we have one more tour before it opens? Do we get a tour?
As we get closer, yes.
Counselor Evans.
I just wanted to thank you, Karen, for your thoughtful and well-spoken words. And I appreciate your hard work, thank you.
Karen, I want to echo that as well. Thank you so much, it's been quite the journey and we are so, so very fortunate that the councils before saw a vision and that vision is coming to fruition. And the fact that we are taking care of our community is so key, you know? And I hear it all the time when we, I talk to other counselors and mayors and they're going, what did you do? You know? And I share this story about what trendsetters we are and what a great vision we had for Sicamous and how we're continuing with it. And it's an amazing story and it's such a success story. And thank you, you're a big part of that, so, and the numbers are amazing. So thank you very much for all you've done as well to get us to where we are and almost the journey complete and fully functional. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, we're still missing our interior health services, so we are going to go right to RW Broom Bridge Replacement Project. Mica, can you hear me, are you online? Hi, Mica.
Hi, sorry.
No worries.
So you don't have to look at the bottom of my chin, hopefully this is going to work. Excellent, you can see me?
No, we can't. Oh, no, I was that guy.
I'm actually, Captain, if I may, can I share my screen? Because I've got some extra slides, we've added some pictures, which I think will help.
Oh, there you are.
Yes, we'll just make sure your permissions are updated so that you're able to do that, Mica.
Okay, let's try this. Do you see a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Well, thank you for having me today. And just before we get started, sorry that I can't be there in person, I'm joining today from the unceded territories of the Sykes people, I'm in Kelowna for some other work. So appreciate you accommodating me being virtual. With me as well, thought it would be worth introduction for Bailey Chamberlain. She is the acting district manager for Ministry of Transportation. And so she will be able to answer all the questions that might relate to district operations. And I know there's some pothole things that we'll talk about today. So really just wanted to give an update as committed to last time with our summer schedule changing and also kind of walk you through what the next three months kind of looks like. And then also just take any questions and hear from the community if there's things we can improve. So I hope that you can see the next slide now, did that work? Perfect. So just a reminder of what we're looking at in this 3D rendering is illustrating what the project will look like in the end. I'll talk a bit about the highway overpass, which is work that is upcoming. So that's here, which is the old, the new connection to Old Spawmashine Road. Also this rock cut, we'll show you some pictures of where we're progressing there. And this work is currently underway. And over here, this is the preload area that I'll show you with some photos about. So first things, this is from our construction camera, so thought it gives a good example of what we're working on. So this is our Pier 1, so piling works actively continuing. And this is the work bridge that we had completed. These piles over here is Pier 2, so work is progressing well there. And for a fun fact, I think we've installed almost one, half a kilometer of piles into the ground already. Additionally, this rock cut up here is progressing well. This work will continue through the summer. We've already, just as a fun fact there, we've already blasted 100,000 cubic meters of rock with 30 tons of explosives, so lots of work has been done, but more is to continue. And so as we work into the summer schedule, you will see more blasting here. The time of day will just change and I can get into some details about that. Additionally, I wanted to highlight the rock side that we had and I really wanted to appreciate everyone's patience with us as we did have a second rock side. And so, and this ties into why we need to extend our winter closure. So this is the initial slide, you can see here, it's about 750 cubic meters of material that came down. And with this overhang left, that is the work that is progressing right now. So this is a shot of what they're doing now, so essentially they need to knock down this extra rock. And work there can't progress with public traveling through. So worker and public safety is number one. There is a berm, so the risk of any rock coming down is very low, but we don't want to take any risk with health and safety of our workers or the public. Next, so this is looking east. So this is the Pier 1 that I spoke about. You'll notice there's a big mountain of dirt, so that is our preload works. This is where the new bridge will land, so we need to let this dirt sit here. And it is essentially just squishing down to make sure that, that there's no compaction in the future. And so just wanted to remind everyone, so while we are in closures, and so you'll note that I've highlighted this to June 25th. So that is the work for the rock stabilization and it's actually rock scaling work. So till June 25th, which is a change from June 15th, so 10 extra days of closures where we will be closed from 9:00 to 3:00. Then we will move into the summer closure regime, which will only have full closures allowed from 7:30 PM till 9:00 AM. Sorry, the lights just went off. And then there is some nighttime closures from 12:00 in the morning till 4:00. But that is dependent on the work that's happening. We will likely also have some additional works that has blasting during this window, the 7:30 to 9:00. And then we will be hauling rock overnight, so works will continue and we will continue to be hauling to the Harvey pit. And we've been monitoring other things to update. We've been monitoring the operation of Highway 97 A and B and really just wanted to share our patience. I know it's not ideal, but it has seemed to be operating quite well. And line paint has gone down, so it's now a bit easier to see. And yeah, that's kind of our update, sorry, it's not overly, work's continuing and it's going largely as planned, except for some of those closures.
Thank you, Mica.
Any questions?
We will open it up to council, Counselor Rich.
Through the chair, thank you, Mica, for being here. One of the big concerns I'm getting from people who live here in town is the intersection at 97A and the TransCanada Highway with the dump trucks and with all the rerouted traffic. That poor intersection has taken a horrible, horrible beating. And they keep patching it on a regular basis, which is not acceptable, like it's a mess. And I know, I've actually talked to two of the three garages in town. And there's been over 12 people that have had to like have their rims replaced or tires replaced from those potholes. So they seem to patch the little pothole and then it pops back up. And then the turn lane itself is just a nightmare, like someone who didn't know it that was on a motorbike, there's a really good chance we're going to, you know, someone, and then someone's following too close because the traffic is very, very heavy on 97A. I drive that many times a week. Is there any hope that we can get someone to come out and look at that? And instead of patching it, take the time and fix it properly?
Through the chair, thank you for the question, Counsel, and I'll invite Bailey Chamberlain to actually answer that one.
Hi, yes, I can, I can speak to that. While I don't have a specific schedule to offer at this time, I can assure you that we will be resurfacing the intersection of Highway 1 and 97A. Most likely that work will take place later this year in the fall.
Okay, thank you. So I've got another question. Another big concern within our community is we, what is happening under the bridge? So that's always been an access to get to the beach and as summer's coming, our kids are going to the beach already. We got a beautiful volleyball courts down there and our schools take the kids almost daily down right now because the weather's good. And they're running across TransCanada, which they're, you know, playing Frogger with the dump trucks. But there are very, a lot of people very concerned on are we going to have beach access under the TransCanada by the boat ramp off Finlessen? Or will we continue to ask people to cross the TransCanada to get down through the Silver Sands Road?
So you are correct, for the safety of folks, I pulled the picture up here, hopefully, again, you can see the amount of equipment here and this view doesn't get quite around. So for us during operations, it's really not safe to have pedestrians walking there because there's, you're mixing heavy equipment and people. So we will continue to have closures of pedestrian access during the day, so from 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM. But it is open at night and we are looking to make sure that, at other options of what we could do to help with pedestrians and making sure that we look at either having traffic controllers or other options.
Okay, thank you, one more, Counselor Rich.
Just to follow up on that, Mica, can we get a date on that? Because if we open up June 25th and we've got, and we have a lot of kids that go down, they just go down to the beach without the parents, probably from about age 11 on, and they're running across that road, and if that highway is open, that's going to be dangerous. So we either need an interlight or flaggers or even a marked crosswalk. That is just literally an accident waiting to happen. Because our community and all our guests that come into our community, we grow to 15,000. The kids are at the beach and a lot of the kids are coming across that highway. So can you give me a timeline when we can hear back from you on how we're going to address that?
Yeah, we are actively looking at that and we are actively changing our plans for summer operations to switch the operations. So probably within two weeks, we'll have a better update.
So in two weeks, you can get ahold of Dean and then he can get back to council?
You bet.
That's perfect, thank you, Mica.
I'm not promising that it'll be open all the time though, so that is, I don't want to set the expectation that it will be free flow pedestrian access, but we are absolutely looking at it and public safety, as I mentioned, is top priority for us.
Yeah, and just so if we have something across the TransCanada, if they can't get under the bridge, that they can, if they're crossing the TransCanada, that that is either a marked crosswalk or there's a light there or something temporary gets put in. We've got a lot of public that walks or bikes.
Absolutely, yep.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mica, we appreciate you looking into that and I know that it's all about public safety and you guys do have that on your radar for the summer, knowing how busy we are, so thanks for, thanks for that. Counselor Bushell.
Thank you, through the chair. Yeah, thank you Bailey and Mica, just a couple safety and maybe help speed things up. Up at the dump road where you're taking all the fill, you have some light. You have uh some light standards there that you use at nighttime and before it was built up like it is today, uh, those light stands had to be on the, on the, on the road. Um, now you're built up to the road level. You could actually take those light standards off the road and move them on to that fill area. Because uh, uh, a lot of times when your trucks are moving on there, people have to pull off the road to get out of the way of the trucks. So if you just move those off the, off the road, uh, those light standards, those portable light standards, uh, the, onto the uh level dirt, you'd be able to uh, everybody be safe there. So it's it is pretty congested when the dumps open on Fridays and that everybody has to wait for the trucks to go around because there's not enough room for two cars to pass on it. Um, that was one. Um, the pedestrian approach, like people are trying to cross the bridge on a bike or, or walking. And there isn't, there isn't any walkway on, on the uh south side of the bridge. And the approach to the bridge where the footprint is or the uh preload is, is very, very narrow. And it puts them basically right on the white line of the shoulder. Is there any, is there any possible way there could be just a little bit of even a ha- like a half a meter or a meter to uh just give a little bit of access to that uh walkway? Because right now I've experienced somebody walking across the bridge, not on the sidewalk side, and it's very, very dangerous. There's just not enough room there. So there's just, as you just said before you hit the bridge and you're going west for like even a person to walk um uh to get onto that sidewalk. So if there's any way you could just squeeze a little bit of that uh preload out of the way, like just a couple, couple feet or so, it would help. So that was one. And then, and then the last one, uh, one of our local M L As brought it up. Um, the merge, the merge lane going east off Highway ninety seven onto the Trans Canada, there's a merge lane there. Well, people, there's no, no lines there at all. There's no, uh, no lines. They're all worn right off. But if there was a merge uh yellow line along there for merging traffic, people would at least, it would keep the traffic moving. Right now, everybody gets to the highway corner and they stop. A lot, not everybody, but a lot of people do. But if there were some yellow lines on there, they'll show them there's a long merge lane there. They would uh, it would help, you know, alleviate the plug up from the traffic circle. So those are my three, and thank you very much.
Uh, thank you through the chair. Uh, I will commit to uh looking into those three uh topics and I will through Dean uh get uh back to council on that.
Appreciate this, Micah. Counselor McCabe?
Nope, I'm good.
Counselor Evans?
Thank you. I just have one question. Um, it's probably a Hail Mary pass, but is there any chance that you guys could do seven thirty to seven thirty instead of seven thirty to nine? With the uh, with uh commuters in town that are trying to get to their jobs? I'm just, just a question I thought I'd ask.
And that is the evening closures?
Yeah, seven thirty P M to nine A M, you said, right?
Nine P M.
Nine P M. Oh.
Only an hour and a half.
You won.
My bad. Thanks.
Hi, Micah, me again. Um, my other question is, how far down do we go? Because in the original plans, it stopped at Silver Sands Road. But when I drive it, it looks like we're almost going down to the light. So how far are we double laning down?
Uh, it's a total of one point nine kilometers. Uh, and it, it goes uh almost to the intersection, so past Silver Sands.
Okay, almost to the intersection. Let's, if what I see is what it is. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Micah, thank you so much. Um, and I know that uh folks probably aren't thrilled about the June twenty fifth pushback date, but however, um, we're building a bridge or replacing a bridge in our community and it is short term pain for long term gain. And we also recognize that projects aren't going to go without issues. So um, I just, I just want everyone to just remain patient and uh slow down and watch for flaggers. Um, it is, I know it's summer and we're going to get a little bit busy, but let's encourage all of our, our visitors to to plan ahead and be a little bit patient. So um, the um, and I just want to um just double check on a couple of things, which I know the answer's too, but we are live. So um the channel will not be closed this summer and the boat launch will not be closed. So boat launch and channel still full use. We have designated some parking um over at Finlayson Place for truck and trailer parking. So for those that want to use the launch, can still use the launch and park at uh Finlayson Place, just to verify that.
You are correct. Yep, boat launch is open and uh, yes. Absolutely. And uh, I just wanted to also say thank you, uh, Mayor Council and, and community members for your patience with us as we uh work through this. And a really big thing, thank you to uh District of Sycamore staff who've been really helping us out. And yeah, really appreciate working closely together.
Thank you, Micah. We appreciate that. And yes, we do want this project to go as smooth and as quick as we can. So anything that we can do to help move it along safely, we will uh, we will try to do. Um, just a quick question about Harvey Pit. Um, you're going to still be hauling during the night. So Harvey Pit will not be closed down for the summer. It's still going to be an active site, correct?
You are correct. Uh, and actually increasing in the amount of hauling because it's at night. And so, yes.
Okay, so um, I don't know if, if you've shared that or if it's shared, but we should be sharing that. Okay, Counselor Bushel?
Yes, I see the chair. Thanks for reminding me of that calling Harvey Pit. Uh, how much uh, how much room do you have in there? Do you still have a lot of room for fill or um, are you going to be hauling right to the end? Or are you going to need another place?
Uh, we do have uh through the chair uh to the question. Uh, we do have additional uh pits available, but Harvey Pit, uh, we would fill that up first. That's, that's the goal. And we do still have sufficient room right now.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, Micah, thank you so much for um keeping us informed and the great communication. So um we will await your reply on some of these things and continue on.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Micah. Take care.
Take care.
Okay, so we're going to move forward. I think Chris is now on the line. Chris Sims, the Executive Director, uh Interior Health Services is ready to go. Hey, Chris, are you online?
Good afternoon. Just doing a sound check here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Thanks, Chris.
Great. Thank you, uh, Mayor Anderson and Council for having us today. I do have a supporting cast uh behind me here who's going to walk uh through some of the health services that are provided in the Sycamore's area. I do have to note though that I might lose a couple of them at two o'clock because they're chairing other meetings. But we'll try to get through as much of the presentation as we can. Um, and then just uh, just to like, you know, Mayor Anderson and Council, this is a slide deck that we're providing uh councils in the North Okanagan Shuswap Columbia area. And this first slide deck, we're trying to go an inch deep and a mile wide, going through all the health services that we provide to communities. So you're going to hear from mental health and substance use, long-term care, home and community care and acute care as a way to inform you and those that you serve around the health services that are provided. At a future meeting, we're happy to come back and dive a little bit deeper into any particular health service that you have more questions about. Next slide, please. And just recognizing and acknowledging the traditional ancestral unceded territories, there's actually seven territories that interior health uh does work on. And uh, this territory that we're focusing on today is a Shaquemec uh territory. Where Sycamore's, most of the Sycamore's health services uh work plays out on. Next slide, please. So I, I do have responsibility for health services in the North Okanagan and also what's called the Emergency Services Network for Interior Health. But there's a very mighty and strong team, very capable team that supports health services in that region. Uh, we have Carl Ray Bergen. Uh, he's actually in Medicine Hat, but he's calling in and he's going to talk about health services in the Shuswap Lake General Hospital. You're going to have Angela speaking about uh uh home health, community care. Uh, David's, uh, David is speaking on behalf of Megan Thorne today about mental health and substance use. Uh, Sheridan Fraser is there today to speak about primary care and public health. And then we've got Julie Davenport speaking about long-term care and early childhood and development. So we'll go to the next set of slides here. And Carl, if you're on, and uh you can introduce yourself a little bit more if you'd like, and please start on S L G H.
Thank you, Chris, and uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for the opportunity to uh meet with you today and and provide you a brief overview of uh some of the services uh here at Shuswap Lake General Hospital. Uh, as Chris mentioned, I, I am uh in the process of uh relocating um from Ontario to Salmon Arm. And so in the next week, we will um be able to call uh Salmon Arm home uh officially, and we're excited for that. So it uh, it's my pleasure to uh just briefly go through the services here um at Shuswap Lake uh Hospital. Next slide, please. Uh, you're at uh S L G H or, or S L H as we refer to. Um, we do have several uh inpatient units. So you can see there we've got level four um as well as level two. Both of those uh are just separate uh floors within the facility and operate with a general medical surgical uh inpatient beds. Uh, you'll note that we've got the ability to have thirty seven uh funded spaces. Uh, and then there's some additional capacity that can be found uh in unfunded spaces that uh is utilized in uh high pressure uh times uh where volumes uh exceed the funded capacity. And so that gives us some ability to um adapt to uh seasonal changes. We have a maternity unit um which provides uh full maternal uh care for our patients. Um, we have three funded beds there, um two labor and delivery rooms, and then three postpartum uh private uh rooms for um our patients there. Um, furthermore, we have an high acuity unit uh which is also uh combined as a cardiac care unit. There are uh three capacity max in there. Um, those are three funded beds. Two of those uh are able to have isolation rooms. Some of these uh spaces can be utilized for off servicing uh medicine uh patients uh in times of over census. And then we have an emergency department that has eleven stretchers uh and within that, an additional two uh trauma rooms that we use uh for incoming patients uh with the ambulance. Next slide, please. Uh, we do offer uh quite a broad range of um outpatient services as well. So um you can see them there. We have an ambulatory care unit. Um, we see quite a few patients through here uh at any given time um and throughout the year. We have oncology services or cancer services for patients um that are ambulatory. We offer physiotherapy, occupational therapy, uh and some nutrition services such as a diabetic educator or dietitian um as well as a speech uh language pathologist. We do have a respiratory clinic for patients with breathing challenges. We offer a pain clinic for uh patients who experience ongoing and chronic pain. Uh, we have a cardiology uh area for patients who experience heart challenges. Uh, and then we also have a pre-surgical screening area uh where patients come uh to see us in preparation for uh upcoming uh surgical procedures. And uh, that's, that's the end here for the acute care side of um Shuswap Lake uh Regional Hospital. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm Angela Sabo. I'm the Director of North Okanagan Home and Community Care Services. And I will be speaking to you about my programs today. The geographical area of Home and Community Care Services for the Shuswap spans from Malacca to Sycamore's and Mara from Canoe to Salmon Arm through Tappan, Blind Bay, S rental and Eagle Bay. We provide services three hundred and sixty-five days per year. On average, we serve five to six hundred active clients within the Shuswap with approximately fifty clients served in Sycamore's. Our teams are interdisciplinary. We represent a broad spectrum of professions and practices to support our community clients' needs. And there's a number of programs that both professional groups support, including nursing clinics, palliative and end of life services, community bathing and home support, adult day programs, seniors' health and wellness programs that support individuals with cognitive health and wellness and uh rehabilitation and case management clinicians. Our philosophy of client-centered care means that we wrap services around the client where they have a single clear contact person to coordinate their supports within the team, the community, and with the client's physician. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you uh for, I, I'm standing in today for Megan Thorne and uh to talk about mental health and substance use services in the Sycamore's area. Next slide, please. We, we cover the same uh same geographical area as Angela just described. Um, so mental health and substance use provides services for, for those with moderate to severe supports uh requiring moderate to severe supports and services are delivered in, in Salmon Arm, but, but also uh with outreach to the community. Uh, we are seeing some, some folks at the Park uh Parkview Place or sorry, what is the name? Parkland Center, the strip mall. Uh, we have uh a small site there, the Sycamore's Health Center. And all, often a lot of our services are provided in clients' homes. And uh, we, we have substance use counseling, mental health counseling, case management services or, or more long-term case management with uh, with folks in the community. And then the opioid agonist therapy, which is a, a remote service as well. Next slide. So the, the, we, we don't uh currently have a waitlist uh for for any of our, our services, although there may be a wait time. And so some of the services that we offer for those who are uh having to wait are, you can see there would be things like uh C B T group or an anxiety management group. Uh, treatment, support and recovery, seniors' mental health and, and our, our two um kind of keystone case management services. And the Community Support Worker Program also supports that. Next slide, please. We have uh, we have a psychiatrist who traveled the seminar and they can also provide some virtual support for folks that are in the area that can't make it into the community. And that's it for me.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm calling in from the traditional territory of the Shaquemec Nation. I'm just actually at the Sycamore's Health Center. Uh, my name is Sheridan Fraser. I'm the Clinical Operations Manager for the Primary Care Networks in the North Okanagan. And I'm just standing in for uh our Director Darren Klassen, who oversees public health and primary care. Uh, next slide, please. Yeah, so I'll start first with a primary care overview. Um, and I think like first and foremost, primary care is a highly collaborative space um between interior health, Shuswap North Okanagan Division of Family Practice, local providers, First Nations and many community members. So as partners, we work together to achieve three goals. One being narrowing the patient attachment gap. So there's many uh ways we are attempting to do this. Uh, one of them is as a part of the primary care network, we work with Karen Eastland here and in Sycamore's and the Sycamore's team to recruit primary care providers, which includes Jennifer Post-Belfour, our current nurse practitioner here, and she is funded through the primary care network. A second shared goal is to enhance access to episodic care. Our division and uh primary care partners have really taken the lead on this and have developed a few strategies. One of them being an after-hours care line for patients that run uh during the weekends and in the evenings. And then another initiative being the Shuswap Saturday Walk-in Clinic, which is a rotating walk-in style clinic run most Saturdays uh throughout the year. And then our third uh shared goal is team-based care. So in September twenty twenty-four, we officially opened the Salmon Arm Primary Care Network Hub. So this is a team of nursing and allied health professionals who work collaboratively with our providers and patients uh to deliver a comprehensive suite of team-based supports. Uh, we are continuing to roll out the primary care network and adding more team members to help us meet the needs of the providers and our patients. And then we can start doing outreach to communities like Sycamore's. But the services that we have currently in Salmon Arm is available to Sycamore's patients as well. Uh, and next slide for public health, I'll do a, a public health overview. You probably all know Donna, who is our main public health nurse. Um, and we've been very fortunate to have her and the public health team be so dedicated to supporting the needs of our community. Um, and there's a particular emphasis on three key goals, one being maternal, child and family health. So this includes, but So this includes, but definitely not limited to, meeting families within the first forty-eight hours of their little one's birth to support breastfeeding, baby weights, and many other questions or concerns that may come up. The second is healthy schools. So our public health nurses are very embedded in the schools, and we're closely to support teachers, administrators, and students with health initiatives and questions. And then our third third key goal is communicable disease prevention, working closely with our medical health officers and our B C communicable disease center, and we're also actively engaged in respiratory immunization campaigns. A few upcoming initiatives that, sorry, almost done. A few upcoming initiatives are enhancing access to sexual and reproductive health services in our communities and examining how we can partner further with schools, and also recognizing that our most of our communities across B C have suboptimal immunization rates and addressing those rates by working on an immunization action plan, supporting the community by making vaccines more accessible and fostering evidence-based conversations about vaccines. And that wraps up my presentation. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Julie Dunford. I'm Director of Long-Term Care for North Okanagan and Early Childhood Development in for all of interior health. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that as a child from Alberta, I spent many a summer at Whispering Pines and Merritt Lake. And it was the joy that I experienced in this region that actually brought me to the Okanagan, North Okanagan, Shuswap as an adult. So and Merritt Lake is where we go for my birthday every year, whether people want to go or not. So love the area and lots of connections for me.
Good to hear, good to hear.
And yes, my dad was that fast driver from Alberta, but we won't talk about that today. All right, so long-term care in North Okanagan. If we can go to the next slide. So really, you know, we have the honor and the privilege of being able to provide support for those who need complex care. So those are those who actually need twenty-four-hour professional nursing care. Typically, this is our seniors. We do have those who are younger that are at our long-term care facilities. But when you no longer can get the care that you need at home, long-term care is is where you go. And and we are, like I said, we're so lucky to be able to provide care for those who really are the citizens and those who looked after us for so many years. So it's it's a duty that we take to heart. Next slide. So in the North Okanagan and Shuswap area, we actually we have quite a few facilities. So from the Sycamore side, you actually access long-term care from a few different ways. So we see those who go to Enderby, which is Parkview Place, that has the thirty-one beds. Salmon Arm has a combination of both I H-owned and contracted partner sites. We have had actually quite an increase in beds, fifty-five in the Salmon Arm area, where we saw beds reopen at Hillside and at Mount Item U. So our wait lists are quite low. The other area that we see emissions from Sycamore as well is Ravelstoke at Mount Cartier Court. So we have, like I said, you know, for Sycamore, there's different different areas they can go. Really, it's about we're trying to keep families as close together as we can, connections to community, accessing services. So there's a lot that goes into it. And really, at the end of the day, though, it's client-focused. And so we're we're lucky that way in North Okanagan Shuswap area that we have so many facilities and options for families and loved ones. All right, next slide. So that's me, really short. I really, I'm going to do a quick shout-out though to early childhood development. So it is three programs: audiology, speech pathology, and dentistry. We provide either in clinic or outpatient service through Sycamore's area. And what's great is that is we really support those. It's that start, right, at their journey. And so with Sycamore specifically, we have speech pathology at the clinic. And then, like I said, we have staff that come in. And so we see quite a few young families, which is always so great. And it's really sometimes their first connection between that and public health with interior health. And so it's very much a prevention and education type of program. So so yeah, so that's long-term care, early childhood development program.
Hey, thank you. I guess the floor is open to questions now, right, Chris?
Yeah, no, for sure. And I I am going to lose, I think, Angela first here. So if there's any questions around home and long-term care, she's the kind of the expert there. I do want to pick up on what Julie said, though. Those fifty-five beds that we were able to open up in the Shuswap area have been in wait times to get into long-term care. Now Angela can elaborate on that if you're interested in it. But our wait times have gone down to literally with maybe one or two people, if not zero people on that wait list in community up in the Shuswap North Okanagan, which I know in years gone past, people sometimes could wait months to access a long-term care bed. So really good work by some of those on the the call today and in our organization. But over to you, Mayor Anderson. We're happy to answer some questions. And like I said, if you want us to come back and dive a little bit deeper into any one of these programs, we're happy to do so at a future council meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Rich?
Just through the chair, I just want to again say thank you. Jen's in our high school, and she comes every two weeks, and that is incredible to have her in our community and that the kids have that access and and really appreciate it. It really changes a lot of things for the kids.
Counsel Bushel?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Great presentation, and I appreciate all you guys do for our community and the surrounding area. Thank you.
I think that's it. Chris, I'm just going to echo that as well. Thank you guys very much for being part of our community and showing up in our community. We really appreciate it. And yeah, meeting with us and keeping us informed. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and I look forward to following up with you, Mayor, on some of the conversations we've had previously, but also to get your thoughts around where you might want to take this next. Again, we can do a deeper dive of fifteen or twenty minutes into any one of the sectors you heard about today. And we want to keep this going with your counsel in the months ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, I received a letter yesterday from Karen's assistant, letting us know that the blood, the lab here in Sycamore will be open one more day, starting June the twenty-fifth. I think it was. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's going to be in earlier June, so June twenty twenty-five, sorry, July, July twenty twenty-five. I think it's earlier in the month, though, in July. Might be the fourth or the the tenth, and I can get that information for you. But you're going to get fifty percent more time that the lab will be open. We're going from two days to three days. And it'll open at eight o'clock in the morning until two in the afternoon, combination of appointment-based visits and walk-in visits.
That's perfect. Thank you very much for that also. And Counsel is aware, and everyone's aware, that we've been having conversations based around moving a lab into the health center, the Sycamore Health Center. So I know there's conversations that are ongoing, and you do have to. I think Life Lab is very interested, and there is a contract that you hold with the province for doing that work, and you're looking into allowing Life Labs to share that contract or have that contract as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think in the letter that you will have received, I think it pointed out that Life Labs holds a provincial contract through the Provincial Health Services Authority, and it's through that contract that the province is looking at other ways that a partner like Life Labs can provide us service to communities like yours.
Perfect. Thank you, Counsel.
Answered my question. Thank you. We'll have walk-ins.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate the presentation today. Thank you, everyone, for sharing with us and being here today.
Great.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving here. We've got Recreation Update. Jamie, you've got the floor.
Good evening, everybody. For the chair, I'm just here to do my quarterly Recreation Update for everyone. So we're just going to jump right into it, so I'm going to take up much more of your time. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of what we're doing for the summer, as always, we know that summer is a very busy time. So we typically don't run a lot of programs in the summertime because, you know, we just never know where people are. But staying true to what we've always done, we will continue our Swim for Life swim lessons. I'm happy to report that we're already sitting at fifty-two registrations for the summer. And last year, we had fifty-eight in total, so we haven't even got to more summer grandparents increases. Usually that starts happening about the last week of June, when all of a sudden they finalize their plans to come visit grandma. Our Summer Kids Club, of course, will definitely continue on. As it is the summer, we are starting to see the uptake and that same thing. Once kids start making their plans with grandma, grandpa, auntie, uncles, and that's when we see that our numbers are increasing. Had a great conversation with the daycare society. They were questioning why we're running our kids' club, and we explained to them that our kids' club is simply just for that. Those autoners that are coming in, grandma, grandpa need a break from having little ones running around. Or those individuals with the community who just need that one or two days where they have, mom has a doctor's appointment or something like that. So great relationship with Crystal, which has worked out really well, because of those fifty-two kids registered for swim lessons, seventeen of them are actually from the daycare. So we came up with that pilot project this year to make sure that our daycare kids can access swim lessons on a Friday after or on a Friday morning. It has gone off so well that Crystal are going to expand next year. So right now, we're just offering those swim lessons to those that are in their three-to-five age group category. Next year, we're actually going to open it up to those that are in the after-school program as well. So that way, our Fridays will be a technically the day that will basically just go out to those that are in daycare. So it ensures that our local kids that are in care are still being able to offer them or be able to get the much-needed swim lessons. And that one, instead of running the two weeks, like our typical swim lessons do, those run for the bulk of the summer on Fridays and Fridays. So it's a win-win for them. It works over licensing, puts more kids in their filter, and it makes sure that our swim instructor gets more hours for him to go back to college in the fall. So we're also continuing on with our Wiser Yoga. Chris is dedicated beyond belief. He shows up every single Friday, teaches classes, whether he has two instructors or two participants, or if he has a class full of twelve. So I appreciate his dedication, so we keep him up and running. And new for this summer is a program called Kangoo. So when this came to me, I was like, Kangoo, what? So it's called Kangoo, and that's kind of our messaging that we're putting out there. As you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, there was sort of specialized booths that you participate and you jump in. For me, I think back to my days of the boot booths that used to be out, that kids used to run around in. So this is a great program for those who have joint pain problems, because it actually takes the impact on the boots itself. So we're going to run this Wednesday night, starting July second, from six-thirty to seven-thirty underneath the trees at the exercise park. They throw on some music and they bounce and jump to their hearts' content. So if you see them, try me. Go sign up for a class. We're hoping to actually make this a permanent and to continue if the uptake is as good as what we think it is, it will continue on in the following winter as well. So next slide, please, Bianca. So the other things that we've been working on, of course, is Canada Day. So we're excited to gear up for festivities. Everything starts off with, of course, the the seniors' pancake breakfast. We have the the Eagle Valley Arts Council will host their annual craft show and their children's festival, road hockey. Little small uptake that I'd helped, but that's because I found out that Salmon Arm is now running their own road hockey tournament. So I guess I'll take that as a compliment that I that I stole our idea. So we'll put out a deadline. We're looking to see if we can gather up enough teams. But if we don't, we'll go back to the original drawing boards, and we'll make it a traditional pickup game where everyone's invited. Come down, bring your sticks, bring their bring your helmets, and just everybody get in there. The only difference is that we won't yell car, because the road will be closed, because we don't want anybody getting invited. So so we'll be starting up live with our canned music around between nine and ten o'clock in the morning. And then after that, starting about noon, we're going to highlight all of our local artists. So I'm working with the school right now. They're bringing their drum lines. The drum line is going to come. I'm hoping that their jazz band is polished up, ready to go. I have contacted Adele at that does the drum circle. So we will have a drum circle next seeking place a part of that day. And then as the day progresses on, we'll get into a little bit more polished entertainers that will be graced for stage. And we will finish off our portion with Deep Trouble, and they're a great upcoming global band. And then once our phase is done about the five o'clock, the Deep Trouble will play till, I believe, roughly about six forty-five. There'll be a transfer stage, and then that's when the active takes over with their Van Halen tribute band that they held, Running with the Devil. And then they will play till about eight forty-five, and then that's when we're going to shift everybody over to each part of the road. So. Next slide. So the other event that the district is hosting this is our Shuswap Showdown Event. Actually, I need to update the slide. We're actually sitting at twenty-six competitors at this point in time. The competitors range from the ages of sixteen to forty-nine, men and women. And as you can see, the the age or the weight classes are listed there. What I'm very excited to report for this is that for this first-time event is look where the people are coming from for this event. So we have our local surrounding areas with Vernon, Salmon, or Enderby, but we are getting people from Kelona, West Kelona, Cataloupes, Williams Lake, Fuscoopie, which if those who don't know, is up by Dawson Creek. And then we are also getting folks from the island, from Nanaimo and Port Moody. And so we're really excited and working with Ray Dean on this event. We have a meeting tomorrow when we to kind of finalize the last few things. I've worked out a deal and have a local photographer that's going to come in and capture events. He'll set up a movie, he'll sell the events, but then will also give us the rights for some photos for future promotion of this event. I am working with the curling club. They are going to open the curling club and have a small beverage garden. The participants might be there upstairs. And then we are looking, work, working with Fritz, the baker, and a potential hot dog vendor to come in and set up some sort of future in the day. So we anticipate this event, it will depend on the amount of participants, to run from about nine, nine AM to roughly about four PM in the afternoon. And then our hope is, like I spoke about before, is this next year, we're going to turn this into a spring event, bets and have it be two days in May, or one day will be strongman, and the next day will be a CrossFit competition, working with the rec center, moving it indoors. So if you've ever been to a CrossFit competition or checked them out, our former Eagles hockey coach used to be a CrossFit competitor. They get, the the stands will be packed. It'll bring people to the community. And a lot of them that come for the strongman participate in the in the the CrossFit competition. So they'll actually be staying here for the entire weekend, which will be a big boost for our community for the month of May for next year. So next slide, please. So we have some other events that we've been working on with other groups, of course, is Deb with her her farmers market. She's done an amazing job with that. The Downtown Core is going to play host to the two-car shows like we've mentioned before. Music in the Park will be transitioning over to Finlinston Park. A little bit of an update, we did the Bruce Connor Electrician is actually made it made us aware that there actually is a plug. That's actually and the rec center and the rec center, David Bog, the arena manager, who is leaving, but has informed Justin. We can plug into that, so that's going to save some hassle, because there's actually power there now. We don't have to run generators and cords and everything else. So that was a really nice, a nice surprise that none of us knew about. Deb is and her group, the pickleball club, are having their third annual pickleball tournament. And if you look at the bottom right corner there, and you look at the back, that's actually Mayor Anderson with our Eagles and our upcoming Eagles golf tournament in September as well. So just a little plug that the mayor is in there real close. So next slide. So not only have we been working on summer, working on fall, these things that you see before you are actually all set up and in place. So the one thing that I am very excited about is to be able to move our yoga programs and potentially one or two of our other fitness programs into the healing center in that community space, especially yoga, because we have a lot of folks that would like to attend the yoga. But going up and down the stairs is a challenge then. So being able to offer this nice, bright, big space would be great. The yoga class, you can only fit about eight or nine people in that space. That's awfully tight now with the bigger spaces. There'll be a more warm and welcoming for those who want to participate. Working with the school to ensure that we still have access for our ever-popular pickleball nights. Mara is back with her paddle lineup, so she'll be doing paddle classes for us again on Mondays. She now also is going to be offering two morning yoga classes. So and with the addition of the parahockey program that we have up and running in the fall, we will have programs running seven days a week. We are also working on the top soccer that we have up and running, talking with Bianca, talking with a few other parents. They like the forty-five minute time, they like the five-thirty time. So we're looking at, um, branching out that program in the fall to where it's a sport ball program. One week is soccer, one week is basketball, one week is this, one week is that. And we'll focus on that toddler age group from three to five because it seems we work them out. And then we're looking at doing like weekly family craft night as well because that's one of the other things that we've been asked to do. So, so things are coming into place. And the biggest thing here is that, um, Pacific Sport at Kamloops has actually donated us nine sleds for our para hockey program. So we actually now, the district decision has fifteen para hockey sleds. So that means our program can house fifteen people. And we're actually pretty excited because Jackie is already trying to line up games with folks from Kelowna and Kamloops. So stay tuned, we may be seeing some games here as well. Um, and then other than that, we're just working on the fall events. Of course, our, our annual Halloween party will be for our Eagle Valley Arts Council. For that, again, mark the dates, Saturday, December sixth, we'll do the Christmas light up. And we'll know more about the time of the, the holiday train once it comes up, maybe about Octoberish. And next slide, please. And then just so you're aware, like, these are the groups and just a small snippet of the groups that I work with, with the recreation department. So, you know, working with Jake with his minor ball, um, already had a chat with him for twenty-twenty-six. He is looking at potentially hosting a men's tournament here as well. Um, maybe hosting a provincial, so there's the potential of six tournaments for next year. Um, like I said, working with the Sushaw Strongman competition to make that a bit bigger. Working with the Stuyler Figure Skating Club, instead of us offering the Learn to Skate program, working with them to help, um, find some ice time. Kind of working as a liaison with the Rink, Minor Hockey, that sort of thing, so we can give them an extra ice time, so that way they can offer more programs. Instead of, I guess, I've explained to them, I said, you have some parents that are always wanting to or can afford to pay for a full year of skate. But they have families out there that want maybe a six-week program that they're, that they can do. So that's one thing that we've worked with them. So I have said out of itters to you guys, I will not run a Learn to Skate program if we can find the ice time suitable for them to work. Um, of course, work with the Eagles, Pickleball Club, the Eagle Valley Arts Council, the, the seniors, um, Eagle Valley Community Support Society. And with the CSRT, the biggest thing is, is allocation policy that should be coming out soon. The District of City does get priority ice poking. And so I have already been guaranteed my ice time for para hockey will continue on Sundays from five thirty to six thirty until further notice. Until we don't have the, the numbers to see. And that's all I've got today, so if you have questions, program ideas.
Amy, thank you. I'm exhausted listening to you. That's a lot, it's a lot. And that's great that you're keeping our community so engaged and I love the fact that it's so outdoor, unplug and play. You know, it's getting the kids out there, finding stuff for them to do, doesn't matter, you know, what their interests are. There's something there for everyone, so that's amazing and thank you, Councilor Bailey.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot I love of your plan and I think it's great. And I think it's also just very impactful. Like the one, I want to give a shout out to Jake with the kid ball tournament in town was full. Uh, I could certainly speak for my establishment, so there was a lot of people in town, spending money, staying overnight. That was a real economic driver for sure, so more that we can do around that. Fantastic. I love the idea of you developing this Sushaw Showdown. I just saw this now, I, I think that's a great idea, like for, for May and those shoulder seasons, like that is part of our overall economic strategy and tourism strategy. So it's really nice to see you playing, uh, and supporting into that. Like, I think this is a really nice and comprehensive, uh, strategy, really. I mean, it's more than just a plan, it, it's kind of tying it all together and that's, that's really nice to see. One thing I would like to say about the, the kids program, because I've had several people that have used it who work for me. It is quite nice to have those one-offs, right? That, that in case they wanted even just a day off, right? Uh, they can go here. And so that is, that is very welcome as well. So I'm, I'm glad to see that you're doing that. It just adds different options to hardworking parents and, uh, yeah, so great job, love it.
Excellent, thank you. Councilor Rich. Uh, through the chair, yeah, Jamie, holy cow, that's awesome. What a huge amount of work. I got one question for you, are we going to get any family skates? In the past, you did.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And it's one thing that I have been working with, with the CSRT. Um, David and I have been, been meeting quite regularly, talking about those type of things. So what we're trying, trying to do, and it sounds like, again, I can't speak for the CSRT, but what has been suggested and has been welcomedly, um, or has been received welcomedly, is that there will be a public skate time before our time with the, the Learn to Skate, or the, the para hockey, para hockey. And then from the para hockey will be the men's, or the, shouldn't say men's, pardon me, drop-in hockey, uh, will be. So there'll be like a dedicated four to five hours is what I basically have asked them for on a Sunday afternoon. So that way, people can plan, you know, and then what, what, what I have done even with, um, switching my hats over to the Eagles. We have a few Sunday afternoon games and I have coaches going, well, we don't want to play at three o'clock. I go, I don't care. Our ice time is one o'clock because I'm not bumping public skating, not bumping the para hockey and not bumping that sort of thing. So, so, and so I've had the conversation with my hockey, I've had the conversation with Bigger Skating going, if we want, if we're asking for this, then we need to make sure that we're not planning tournaments. And, you know, being that conscientious of that time from X time to X time, that's still the part that we're trying to figure out is in place. But that will be dedicated, public, sick moose area resident time, public skate, para hockey, drop-in hockey.
Awesome, thank you. That's going to be excellent.
Councilor Bushel.
Through the chair. Lots on, lots on the program now. Um, let's do that about, uh, um, you know, Sam and Arm having the, having the tournament too. Um, because we did draw a lot of people down to Main Street and it was, uh, like, it's a, it's a pretty big event. Um, I know my team that I was with, uh, wanted to, to get involved, there was a couple of them that, they're, they're even younger than I am, but they're, uh, want to pass for this year, but I think we could get some teams together. Is there, is there any, any kind of incentive we could, uh, have for a winning prize or anything that would draw? We'd hate to like to lose some of our local team.
Yeah, see, and what I, what I'm feeling the biggest challenge is, is the fact that Canada Day is on a Tuesday. And I think if we just kind of keep continuing to what we're doing and then once Canada Day gets back to a Thursday, Friday, you know, like Saturday, Sunday type of thing, when people, you know, it's, it's hard because people aren't going to stay that extra day. I mean, we even seen it last year with Monday, with Canada Day being on Monday, people were already going home. You know, where if it was like a Thursday, then people might take that extra day on the Friday to, to extend their long weekend. So I think it's just the, the timing and we didn't experience this before because the last time Canada Day was kind of in the middle of the week, we were dealing with COVID. So we weren't able to host events. So I think it's just going to be getting the momentum back up and ready. You know, I'm, I'm good at calling audibles, you know, I, I, I know how to, okay, well, let's try this type of thing and we'll make it work. But, yeah, but like I said, I take it as a compliment that Seminare took an idea that we used and they're, they're mimicking what we did. So I don't look at it as that, thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Beach. Yeah, I just threw the chair. Jamie, I just want to, you know, say good job because that's a lot, that's a lot going on. And I think that the hockey, the downtown sort of scramble of hockey will, will be fine. I, I'm not something to worry about.
That's what I think is going to happen. It's, it's just going to be an organic thing. And it's just going to be, like I said, I would rather see mom and dad, grandma, grandpa, you know, playing with their kids and grandkids opposed to full-fledged German at times. And then when we get back to that tournament piece, then my hope is that there is a group, whether it be the minor hockeys or the Eagles or somebody, that actually takes on that piece of Canada Day. And it's not necessarily on the District of City to maintain, but support them, but that, then we can turn it into a fundraiser, fundraiser for that down route.
And just to say that you've got so much going on as well, that you're going to draw lots of people out here. They're going to be here already and so I, I just, good job. Don't know how you keep track. Councilor Cave?
Yeah, I just want to say it's a, it's a great program for, you know, a small town. It's, it's, it's packed and, and good job.
Karen, these ones that we asked you because it must be so much fun doing your job. And I looked at it, I said, yes, but it has a lot of stress that goes along with it. But you know what, I, I'm having, I, I love this town and I want to see the kids flourish and thrive. I would like to see the seniors do well. And I think with the, like you said, being able to access a new community space, to be able to offer some programs where it's more level field for, for some of our seniors to access. I think it might take away some of the fear that they have accessing some of our programs.
Sure. Councilor Evans?
Anything?
Good job, Jamie.
Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, I mean, I, I really liked that you had some, some metrics in there of what, what we had last year for swim lessons and what we do. And I, I, I think we should continue to do that because my, my sense is that it's growing. Is, is that this is actually a really good news story that all of these programs are growing and I, I want to be able to tell that story. Because I, I, I just see like the Christmas light up this year and what it was in other years and it's definitely growing. Popularity is becoming like a, almost like a regional thing. People have said, hey, let's go there first. So it's, it's really important is, as much as we can to measure it because whatever you're doing, want to take that and front it out. Because it's working, right? And, and I have many lessons that we can learn and how you're turning some of these things into a larger success than just recreation. I think is really important, so, yeah.
Conversation just this morning, very, very grassroots, um, with, um, Rob Crouch, um, from Paradise Hotel. They're going through the process right now to, um, get their pool up, up to stop and stuff. And so they have actually offered to set their pool to me. Um, so I'm waiting till next Monday. Um, Jason Froy, who used to be with us here, is now the, the manager of aquatics and programs for the city of Seminare. And so him and I have already had a, a pre-meeting before he started. Um, and he knew how much I've been trying to get Aquafit, um, to come to Sick Moos. So that is something that I'm hoping that between him and I, we can form a partnership and be able to actually utilize the pool at, um, uh, the Paradise in order to do that. So there's some logistics around it, but it's, it's always, like I said, I'm always trying to look outside the block on how we can, can add.
Excellent, thanks, Jamie. Thank you very much for everything that, uh, that you're doing and I love the, uh, how this fits in with our Live More, Live Well strategy. So, um, thanks for the, good work. Carly, I think you're up next. We're getting a tourism update and economic with our economic development coordinator.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Um, I first of all, I want to introduce you to Brenna Gordon, who is our Tourism Marketing Coordinator for the D O S D C in Exeter, Moos. Um, as you can see by this presentation, we've decided to slip up the updates. So we're doing our mid-year update for, between tourism and then my act dev will come up the next council meeting so that we can focus purely on tourism, the questions around tourism. And then come the next and we'll tackle everything that's, uh, economic development. Next slide. So the first, um, update, we finally got our final numbers for MRDT for twenty-twenty-four. And I, it's a bit small, but you guys can see the, uh, final performance of MRDT for twenty-twenty-four. So our regular MRDT was down one point four percent in twenty-twenty-four. So that's our traditional accommodators. And however, it was up for our MRDT around Airbnbs and short-term rentals. So total over twenty-twenty-three was a point two percent increase. When we start looking at the analytics around where we spend our marketing dollars and how we strategize our programming, we, we always look at our peak months and then our challenging periods. So as you can see, June, July, and August are our top months and that's consistent over the last five years. Challenging periods are what we've, you know, typically identified, October, April, December. So as we look into our twenty-twenty-six strategic planning, we take into account where our numbers are lower and try and have programming to first fill those as well as looking at those other months that are trailing behind. So some of the key things that we did, um, the first part of the year was our community and stakeholder engagement strategic planning for twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty. So most everyone, I think, in this room was involved with, um, either one-on-one interviews, group interviews, or at the community engagement session. When we did our five-year MRDT application renewal, we received one hundred percent support and buy-in from accommodators and short-term rentals. So I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Councilor Bushel for making that last-minute call to best, to get us to the hundred percent. Um, from talking with the MRDT provider or the MRDT, um, people at Destination D C. It's such a competitive field, as we all know, all funding sources are, are being stretched to the limit and applications are quite high to get into the MRDT program. So having a one hundred percent buy-in really showed the strength and support from our community accommodators towards the, the work that we're doing. And then we completed our final, our twenty-twenty-four annual MRDT performance report, June twenty-twenty-five. As soon as that's approved by Destination D C, I will be sharing it publicly and we'll send you all a copy. So we have an MRDT summary table here that just shows twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four and our first three months of twenty-twenty-five. So right now, we're trending of one point nine percent growth. Again, you always have to take the numbers of the grandest, because it is when people do their annual or their quarterly reporting or monthly reporting. So that's why the numbers can bounce around a little bit. It's not that every accommodator has a specific date that they have to regret their information. So, um, we like to look at these and compare them to the, the year-over-year numbers. So it's, it's a, a good news story, talking to the accommodators, uh, over the last week. Those accommodators are almost fully sold out for July and August. So, uh, it's a really great story. September's looking strong as well. So that we're starting to see some of those trends where people are seeing Sick Moos as that September destination. So our goal is to continue promoting to those, um, travelers that are staying in town, that, um, that segment of traveler that likes to stay away from summer destinations because of the busyness and like to, you know, hop in their RV. So we're activating campaigns that start at the beginning of July to promote Sick Moos as those, that type of a destination in September. I'll cover focusing on fall color campaigns, our trails, uh, you know, the rail trail. We're, we're holding a couple of projects off the side until we can fully announce them. And then, um, stargazing. So we're going to work with our hospital companies to really promote that stargazing aspect as the sunset goes down earlier and look at ways to promote that experience that we have right here that people, you know, might not really think about as a traditional tourism destination experience. Slide. So the big part of our, the first part of our year was a destination development tourism study. Uh, we haven't engaged in a project this large for our, uh, tourism development. We recognized the need as we went into our MRDT five-year strategy that I needed to incorporate. But, um, what we could do to change how our marketing to increase our visitation in our challenging months. So we've just completed our first five years of MRDT. And using those funds, we were able to put in some, um, you know, some of our baseline tourism product, sorry, website, social media, cousins, visitor guides, all those things that are helping us build up, um, our awareness strategy. And now we're going to look at really investing in the marketing, the advertising, the outreach and specific tourism experience, product development that will drive people here eventually to Sick Moos. So when, uh, we did a ton of these progress projects, uh, our biggest one was at the Destination Earth Shop in February, where we had thirty local, um, industry stakeholders. We did, and we, we hosted that at the Red Barn. We also did, uh, individual, or ten Sick Moos Tourism Sector leader interviews. We did eight expert interviews, twenty in-depth local business surveys, and five community and stakeholder presentations to round out this project. So Friday is the last day. Um, we're actually leveraging a lot of the data that we've developed or, um, the, the data that's come out of this project um, through our, from our economic development side, where we're looking at hotel attraction. We're finding that a lot of information is, is playing very well and leading very well into, um, conversations with co-developers and regular developers that we're trying to attract. So next, I'm going to bring up Brenna for her very first council presentation to talk about our analytics. So we wanted to, now that we're focusing purely on tourism for this presentation, we wanted to take a really deep dive into the, the efforts and this, and that we're doing around our marketing. Um, and Brenna is going to be taking.
Hi, Brenna.
Welcome.
So can we go to the next slide? Oh, can you hear, quite soft spoken. Um, yeah, so first of all, this is a course through the website from February first to May thirty first. So total session would be every time someone's on our website, homepage views would be, if I go to a different page, that kind of thing, it's a new ones. Um, and they are up, so good. Um, and then you can see that it's, um, a lot of mobile traffic, like phone traffic. So our next plan for the next phase is going to be to make it a bit more phone-friendly and also to reduce the amount of clicks in between someone discovering Sick Moos through website and getting to an accommodator's website or business's website or that kind of thing. How people will be next. Here, we added a where to shop page, so that has on retail stuff on the panel and a where to park. So that leads to the D O S, uh, checking information page that Catherine did as well as, uh, paid parking options. Um, and then the Then this graphic here is the top visited pages on the website. So the webcams are really, really popular. Trails also popular, so that'll be something to look into, how we can make that. More interesting. Beaches, like actually the Grisay and the pump tracks. So. Looking at those is a good way to know where we should be, especially in marketing. And then Facebook. So Facebook is up. For since 46%. Since the four months prior. So we're doing very really good. Right, he's been making a lot of really great videos on there. One, we're leaving boosted content for some people to get their experiences. So views would be every time the video was seen. And then reach would be each individual person that saw it. So they might watch the video more than once. So I think the reach. It goes for most of 70, 70.2 thousand. And then the next stage. This is a specific ad that brings you to Blackfoot out there. And then so the total reach for that was 15,000. So you can see at the bottom, it played from April 4th to April 19th. There was $200 spent on it. You can see that it was 11,000% worth of views than we previously saw. The content does help get it out. There's some other stats in there, like the interactions coming, how long they watched it. Next stage. Instagram. I'm really. So I think the total views is 240,000. You can see it says from non-followers, so that's everyone it was sent to that doesn't follow the page initially. So that would be where you see where people are discovering Sickoos through the details. The top content. We also added auto responses to frequently asked questions. So if somebody posts a message, they'll answer, it'll tell them. I think like parking, exactly, different amenities, it'll give them the links for that, and the bridge construction is on their wall. Yeah, and then so. Total reach was 71,000. And the next stage. This is the Instagram ad that Brenna did. A total of 30,000 views. You can see a lot of them are non-popular. I think the goal for that one was actually profile visits. So 200 profile visits. And you can see the cost per profile visit that we spent was 56 cents. Total spend was $150. And it went on for 10 days, and the primary audience was Alberta for that one. Yeah, so TikTok is kind of in the initial stages, just figuring out exactly what would be beneficial for that, but the views are really high. 274. That's steadily going up as well. And then we did some paid content golf-focused during the Shu Shua Golf Trail Pass, and that was. Oh, a stay-in-flight. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that company actually from March 2nd to May 24th, that's all we had, so it's a shorter time period. So. There is a lot of potential for TikTok. For the next. Okay, so we're trying to get just more of a promotion in general. Like I said, on the other slide, Facebook is a really good information hub. So even if you're not getting a lot of views initially when you post it. It's all really laid out clearly on the page. So once they do go there, they can go back and see different events, that kind of thing, as long as you're posting them. Yeah. Oh, and then we connected the website to Facebook. So every time something, a new event gets added to the calendar, it posts you out to Facebook. And I found that that actually did help a bit. And we updated the annual events calendar. And then, yeah, we're doing newsletters. So so far, it's been mostly events, but I'm really interested in getting some more like. Image stories kind of thing. I think that the history is something that went to Sickoos, maybe a traction for tourism. And people are kind of over. And content, like there's just so much better on social media. So getting back to a more natural could help a lot. Teaching them about what Sickoos is and why they should come here, like outside of. How beautiful it is. Yeah, so we have any chance to subscribe to it?
Right, so another one of our initiatives that we invested is our June, our Columbia Airport arrivals ads. So each month, we submit 40 photos focusing on local businesses and experiences. So we do one eat, one shop, and two experiences, four events. And each photo plays for six seconds in the arrivals area. We're rotating currently through our retail. We have a calendar right through to the end of the year about which retail and which restaurant gets played on there, and it's shot. So for June, we've got Lou's Mulligan's and Linda's Gifts. And there's a QR code on each of those that direct people to the Exporz Sickoos homepage. We also have the ability to assign a trackable QR code around events or experiences to gauge campaign ROI. So. You know, looking at what's going to get triggered by the fireworks, because that's one of my favorite photos. So next page. And then this is when we look at the QR code tracking, a one-week snapshot of people engaging with the ads to the QR codes. So we'll continue to build on this strategy to gauge the individual scans and incorporate direct business connection with industry stakeholders. So what you can see is, you know, Vancouver, I don't know, but Honwall, Quebec, Newark, Montreal, Los Angeles, Ashford, Virginia, Sarasota, Florida. So we're we're able to see where people are clicking. Now, how we connect that if they ask you to come and visit. Is still a mystery to be solved, but the whole point about this is to introduce people through six-second clips to Sickoos and what we have here. So we can. Generate the clicks through to our page, which then opens them up to the world of what Sickoos has to offer. Hopefully, we can, you know. Get some people here through these particular ads. As Brenna had indicated, these are some of our strongest pages on the website. So we have our Old Town Bay and our Merrill Lake that are our live webcams. We go to the next page, you can see the next two that were launched, so you now have Channel South and Channel War. I'm excited to see what Channel War looks like because of all the construction, but it does give, you know, it's that snapshot that's now. Channel South is probably, I just think, one of the more popular ones. It, when the channel gets busy, there's nothing like it to watch the boats moving back and forth. The nice thing about investing in these particular cameras is we have the ability to change the cancel zoom on them. So we can adjust for. Any of the activities that are happening, so we can point more to the. Foot launch area, we can get to zoom out. I think it's a story zoomed out as far as with him, we can zoom in and out. We have let the construction stakeholders know that they do have access to this camp if they want to take screen grabs off of it. And we can set it up to grab stages of. Snapshot stories so that we can do one of those like stop motion type of videos. Pump track. So that chat was this past weekend. It was, it was great. We had incredible weather. We had great community support. Incredible reach for participants. We we tested a bike in midnight. Unfortunately, we had an accident at the track that did result in a fractured jaw of one of our young competitors. So. We shut the track down, and a lot of people did end up just going home after that. So. Nathaniel, with a fractured jaw, is on the mend, and he's brave. We had an incredible medical team here. Dispatch, the these ambulance services came within minutes to collect him. So. It was, it was very well orchestrated between all of our medical staff. So really happy with the the track staff that we had this year. Because I submitted this presentation before the event, I added in a quick page. Which shows some really amazing stats. So. When we want to measure economic impact around our events, these are some of the things that I can tell you by now with only being three days post-event. We had 72 participants from 21 different cities across B C and Alberta. Most of those were young participants under the driving age, so with that brought their families and siblings. At registration, we asked each participant the following, have you ever been to Sickoos? 18 individual families had never been to Sickoos before and came here solely for this event and were excited to see. You know, what Sickoos had to offer. They pre-read all of our communication that went out to them in advance, which included links to where to stay, where to eat. You know, what to experience when you're not at the track. We asked, where are you staying? So there was an average of two nights. So we figured total incremental nights between one and two-night stays was about 50 to 66 extra nights. The motels, we got them, the ones that didn't tell us where they were staying, five rooms at Best Western, three rooms at Sweet Brave, five at Klein's, four at Paradise. Eight at Airbnbs, hang in these campground, had four camp camping in general. We didn't, they just said camping, so we're not sure where that was. And then staying with friends, we had two people. So there's a participant follow-up survey, so I'll be able to do even deeper into understanding their spending behavior, satisfaction levels, and what's sitting with the amenities that appear. And the impact of the event on the athletes. So I listed a couple of sample questions about, how did you hear about it? Was this the first time competing in the event? How many people traveled with you? How many nights did you stay? Where did you stay during the event? Did you visit any local attractions or participate in other activities approximately? How much did you spend? How likely are you to return to Sickoos outside of the event? So this will go to all 72. Participants to fill out with a deadline at the end of June. I'm hoping to get it back. And then a business and accommodator follow-up survey to assess the impact of the event on local businesses, including hotels, restaurants, and retail establishments. So. Did your business experience an increase in customers during the event? If yes, by what percentage did your customer traffic increase compared to the typical weekend? Did your business experience an increase in revenue during the event? If yes, by what percentage did it increase? Did you see a noticeable increase in out-of-town visitors? Do you think the community should host similar style events in the future? And do you have any suggestions for maximizing the economic benefits of future events? So I'm really interested to see what comes back on this. There was a ball tournament that got canceled. So I think the metrics around the. Amount of people in town will lend more to this event because we didn't really have anything else competing against it in town. So again, I will update you more once I have those details as they come in and we wrap up the surveys. Brenna, also, if I can talk to our our site and look at everything we have listed on the site. In an effort to help our event organizers. So we started with our first one, sending it to the minor hockey organization. So. It's a two-page listing of all of our amenities with QR codes that lead you to the right place on the website. So. To Terry, even a poll from Sickoos Minor Hockey, they really appreciated this because it can go out in their advanced in their team communications. And then also sending it to Jake for his ball team. So this is sort of that first thing that people see when they're thinking about coming to Sickoos. Right off the bat, it gives them their visual way to contact our accommodators as well as planning what they want to do. Knowing that they can, you know, shop places. We've got our live time, our live real-time cameras, and then our visitor guides. So really packing in all of those amenities into a two-page document. That is useful for anybody. Our accommodators were laminating these and in some cases putting them on core class sheets for our accommodators. As they're finding this is answering a lot of the questions that they get from their visitors. And then other initiatives that we've been working on up to the midpoint here is working with the new tourism entity called Salmonon Tourism and. Elevating our partnership with Thompson Open Tourism to restructure programming and how campaigns will be done in light of the services extension issue of tourism. There was a lot of collaboration and spend against specific campaigns. So. Without their party there, now we're we're sort of realigning how we're driving people to Sickoos and Samnar. You guys met Brenna Horton as our new tourism marketing coordinator. So Brenna's with us now three days a week. We renewed the three-year backroads map, full book or full-page advertising. We promoted the. In collaboration with Mary Hills, we promoted the Shu Shua Golf Trail Pass and engaged a lot of, engaged all of our accommodators to do a stay-in-place. So. We did a paid advertising campaign to promote the sale of the golf pass and then align that with a stay with its affiliates. We shot Sickoos initiatives. So some of our early-mortem retailers wanted to figure out how they create a digital landing space to promote. When they have sales, their new stock, et cetera, and drive that as a support logo. So. We supported the development of their digital landing space for their retailers. I attended the B C Tourism Industry Conference back in March. Joined the mountain bike in E C Destination B C, we established our mountain bike park, so I want to get ahead of that so that we have. Campaigns and content already created. So I contracted for a selfie, who's a local mountain bike legend, to help develop our content, but he's already been on shooting. And then he's going to come in with samples of what he has to storyboard how we're going to sell. Sickoos in the Alheta Mountain Bike Park through the lens of someone that actually. Looks at these types of videos to determine where they're going to travel around the world to hit these parks. So. I really think that having him develop this content is going to give us a light up when we start promoting. The Alheta Mountain Bike Park in a much broader broader reach, and he'll help dictate where it is that we promote in terms of geocaching and targeted spends. Met with Destination B C Marketing Development Marketing Manager, Mounter Erica Hummel and Jenna Roberts from Salmonon Tourism. To line up international marketing campaigns to attract visitation to Shu Shua. So. Destination B C turned all of their people into remote workers, and they were able to choose anywhere in B C to live. Erica decided that Sunny Bray in the Shu Shua was where she wanted to land. Which has been such a a great asset for us because we're doing a mini town tour with her. So Jenna and I will host her. In Sickoos to take her around to businesses. She will send a full day here, sort of whining and dining her, showing her all of the areas for the end of June, and then we're going to do the same thing in Samnar. So she is one of the lead voices that determines where their marketing spend goes. And now that she's starting to see what Sickoos and Samnar has to bring to the table, she can't believe. That assets like our house voting that are, you know, our little water, our little waterfalls. There's people that will contact Destination B C programs. He's just saying, do you have waterfall tours, et cetera? So. We get sort of that insight at a local level, which is fantastic. Captain Brenna and myself, the visitor center, chamber, and Salmonon Tourism are working together to ensure we establish consistent messaging with. M O G T, D O S, and other DMOs along the Trans-Canada Highway 97 corridor, just to make sure that everybody has the same message going out to our traveling tourists. Met with David Bo and Cal at Sickoos Rec to confirm placement of a digital info kiosk. So in, sorry. In August, before hockey season starts, we'll be putting in, they've identified a location for our digital kiosks. So that will have. It's basically the visitor guide and the website all packaged into one with a business directory that people can play with while they're at the arena to find out. Where to go, what to eat, what's happening in town, and in the next calendar. And the nice thing is, is the software that I think we're going to land on is 100% customizable and edited. By us 24/7. So there's no need to wait for customer service overseas or anywhere else. If. A business says, hey, we're going to throw on a flash sale for our products, I can actually load that in and that'll pop up. For people on a specific weekend, so we can actually target who's at the arena and what makes the most sense. Attended an ATV B C municipality engagement zoom to give input and feedback on that country usage challenges and opportunities to mechanize off-road tourism in Sickoos. We're auditing 2025 geocaches and doing a big launch community event in September to launch another 10 highly. Degree of difficulty caches. And then working with Samnar Tourism, Northern South Shu Shua Groups to support Grant Lamont from Mountain Bike B C. Who's undertaking a trail user study to better understand the regional trail use, which is funded by the Ministry of Sport, which will help us establish more funding. The metrics we're going to need to apply for funding around our trail usage. So. A couple of other things to note that I did put on here, but we had some really strong requests for our visitor guide. So again, it shows the strength of our visitor guide. So we. Sent boxes already out to the Toda Info Center, Hunter Mahous, Slona, Protection, Chilok, Abbot's Bird, Surrey, and Lyle. So a lot of those requests came from. Networking at the B C Industry Conference when we started talking about tourism and actually house voting was one of the topics at the conference. So. They like to seek us out and get our visitor guide, which was was, we were very proud of that.
Carly, excellent. What a great job, with a lot of information, you know, and and information that we can use to grow. You know. Being the the stats, and the year-over-year stats, so we know what's working. So, great job. And welcome, great job to you as well. Hey, Council, any questions? Counselor Bushel?
Yeah, Carly, I like how you're using Corbett to, you know, better to use who designed or picked GPS the course. And actually, I mean, he has great crew for filming and stuff I got and doing videos. He's done his own stuff like that. So, yeah, it's it's going to be exciting to see that. And I did get an invite up there today. From Trevor and Jennifer, but I had to cancel because of work, so maybe tomorrow or next day.
Excellent. Counselor Bailey, then Counselor McKeeney.
So I love numbers, as you know, because they always tell the actual story of what's happening. And I mean. I think, great, but I see a lot of summer. I see no winter, though. That's that's the, I kind of, the only, my feedback is when I'm looking at the numbers that you gave us here. On the M R D T summer, it tells a pretty. Strong winter story. It tells us almost like, hey, we really got to zoom in on this because there's opportunity. I mean. Even if you went back to all the way to 2023, I mean, the total M R D T was 7,500. 2024 wasn't a great snow year. Twenty-twenty-four wasn't a great snow year, but it's still up, but you take a look at this year, it's dramatically up. And I think that is partly, we do have a very active sled club, and, uh, you know, if you go and you talk to, I know you do. To businesses, and. One of the things that they'll all say is, we've got to get out of just the summer economic zol, kind of, right? That's where everybody makes their money is, those three months of the summer. Where winter comes into place, especially when we're talking about accommodators, is huge. Like, if they start adding on the three months because we are developing that sled sector or winter sports sector. That changes economics dramatically for virtually almost every business here, and you could probably. Extend that to like grocery stores, I mean, the whole thing, right? So that, I guess that is my only feedback there is, I, I think your data is telling you that there is stuff on the move in the winter. And then how we get some of the MRDT money aligned over there and some of the efforts that, that you're doing in the summer. Um, I think it's just, it's just something to, you know, follow the data and the data saying, here's a really great opportunity. Um, because those numbers are, I, I would say, I felt it was a really strong season. I'm surprised that the, the numbers are that strong, but they're dramatically stronger, just as per. So, that, you know, feedback, I mean, obviously, the, the, the bike parks can be great and all those strategies, but. I don't think we should forget about winter, because it's a pretty, it might be one of those low-hanging fruit, uh, opportunities where we can work with. Sled sick moose and really kind of, um, move those numbers up even more.
Yes, so yeah, through the chair, and that's an excellent point, I, I was remiss in adding, I should have added an upcoming slide, which. I'm not sure why I didn't, but when we're looking at where we've allocated our, our winter ad sense, which actually starts. Um, we start sort of mid-July where we start focusing on, as people are boating, we start capering in the snowmobile stuff. Um, I had a really great meeting with Steve Horton, and we're going to spearhead, um, the, uh, Explore Sick Moose is going to spearhead a ladies' ride series. So when I asked him, you know, how do we grow, exactly your question, how do we grow sledding, how do we get that low-hanging fruit and get people into town? And we were playing with a bunch of ideas around families, but we just don't have the terrain to support families. But what we do have is a strong C K and P, um, sponsored ladies' ride that tends to compete with other ladies' rides. Uh, um, around the province, and when I, when I asked them to dig more into the, the concept of a ladies' ride and the attraction around that. We found that, um, looking at their last year's calendar, that it seemed that every single ladies' ride in a month, let's say, every month of, of March, they all landed on the exact same weekend. So what we're going to do is build a structure that we can potentially have a collaboration between all sled clubs. And do a ladies' ride every month or twice a month, and actually have a hub city, so now we're marketing to, um, you know, Steve said. If we were looking at anticipated attendance, especially in Sick Moose Marching, we could look upwards of a hundred ladies attracting them into town. So now what we're going to do going into our twenty-twenty-six strategic planning session, which will happen, it'll start at the end of August, and we'll really start planning that. Is build out a program in collaboration with, um, I Ride B C, sled Sick Moose and our local clubs. And figure out what we could do with a hundred ladies in Sick Moose on a single weekend over two or three months, so, you know, two or three times, what. Bearing experiences could we do, what providers can we bring in? Now that we have this community space, could we bring in chip and nails? I don't know what the right answer is, but, you know. I'm thinking a hundred ladies, we want, we want them eating, what, so we need to really, that was a thought example. Like, is it, is it a, a small service type of an experience? So anyways, we have some time to do it, but now we're starting to look at, let's do what we do best. Which is attracting those sledders that are here for the particular terrain and not trying to reinvent the wheel, so. You know, that's another one, and then when we're looking at, um, conversations with Corbin is, what is the reality of, of fat biking and attracting the winter biking demographic here? With the rail trail, if we actually create something either fat biking or, um, you know, stopping with large hills. Can we do a track setter if there's snow? What are, what are the options of, of maximizing the usage on the rail trail? Um, in wintertime, so now we're starting to have assets that are opening up to bringing in more of that visitation, and then the nice thing about. The pump track is we put in a two-year bid, we committed two years of funding to it, and now it opens up that funding to now reinvest it into our mountain biking. And our winter sports, so I'm really happy that the world now has eyes on our pump track, and we're getting athletes that are coming here because. The design, I mean, you guys nailed it, we're leaving trees in there, everybody's in our, our international race director that came from Switzerland. And when he showed up at the track, he couldn't believe it, he, he works for Velos, so he's international, and he's just like, you guys nailed it here, and we hear about this track all the time, so it's, you know. We've done what we needed to do from a tourism perspective on that particular asset, now we're going to focus on looking at what the five-year plan is to get things, like you said. Everything is all about that, that fall, spring, winter, making sure that we, we develop those experiences for attracting that type of visitor.
Some things, Carly. Yeah, go ahead, and then Counsel McCabe.
Um, no, and just one other thing that I've heard consistently is when people come to Sick Moose versus other kind of sledding destinations. Is the value they get, they get world-class sledding, but their dollar goes a lot further, like. And that shouldn't be underestimated as well, that's a big, big drawing card for a lot of people. Yeah, it's not going to be your party kind of place in the winter, but the quality of what they're getting for the money that they're spending. Is extremely high, so it, that's just another really, I think, strong card for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counsel McCabe and Counsel Beach.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I like the humanities one pager, uh, that's, that's, that's pretty good all-in-one package. Are, are, are we going to have that at the front desk possibly for handouts too? Yeah, that's great.
Perfect. Counsel Beach.
Yeah, to the chair, um, Carly, I'm, I'm overwhelmed with all, all of this stuff, um, I, I think it, I think it's great. I, I, you're building, you're building right now, and you're still building, and there's more to build, so. I see that it's, it's going to, you know, there's going to be money invested. And as you just pointed out, what you've invested towards the pump track, you're now going to turn towards another, you know, so that, that's great. I think it's just going to be crazy here, like, year-round eventually, and with the recreation and all of this.
Absolutely, right, we are.
I'm going to be the fittest seventy-three-year-old singer in the world, and all of you hold me to it.
You'll start going sledding soon.
Well, kidding, I have been sledding.
So, yeah, we are fortunate that we have talented people in our community that are working really hard to build their community, and. It shows the, the love that they have for the community. Um, Counsel Bushel, then Counsel Evans.
Yes, through the chair, Carly, I like what you're talking about, uh, like downsizing your pump track event to maybe, you know, host our own little one. And however you want to do that, but that, the one thing we are, and I like you still get, being involved in the ORV industry. And somehow, um, you know, we have that, that September, October season for ORVing is amazing. Around here, just, just unbelievable, and, and even like, uh, the campground at, at Merril Lake, uh, uh, they call it Merril Lake Campground. Um, it's so accessible to that, that, that trail to get you to Owlhead, to get you to here. Like, the three-value gap, it's just, I mean, we have an amazing opportunity in the ORV industry that we could really focus on. And I noticed a lot of ORVs, uh, traveling around town lately, it's actually, you know, they all got their license plates, they're all even.
It's different this year.
And Marie's been allowing it to happen, yes, I can buy, buy my quad, you know, he's going to let quads pretty soon, so. Hopefully, maybe this year, we'll be able to put a few quads out on the street, but yeah, it's coming, so, thank you.
Through the chair, yeah, and just to touch on that, we're still actively going after that, uh, A T B C. Um, AGM in September, that brings in two hundred of their members, and. They spend a weekend, they do a Green Street Parade, they do all these youth learn to, you know, be a, a proactive rider and whatnot, so. Um, now that we have the community center to do meetings, and we have our campground and a bunch of campgrounds that, because they all come, really, they come to camp, so. Um, that's, we're, we're getting there, so hopefully you can get those.
Counsel Evans.
I just wanted to give you guys a compliment on, um, adapting and, and, uh, with trends, so using TikTok was really smart. Because I got a grade eleven living at her house, and, uh, we, we've been doing a lot with her this school year, and everything that we've been doing that's on her. Bucket list to do this school year, she's got off TikTok, and you can see the numbers, they're huge. You get a video of Corbin on that pump track, I, I mean, the, um, the mountain bike trail on TikTok, and, and people are going to find that stuff to do, so good job with that. And I, I wanted to say too, that amenities one pager was a brilliant idea, and, uh, the, the stats, the impact in town. Economy-wise with the pump track competition, good job, and, uh, yeah, so, thanks.
So we were able to find, I think, one of the stats, I didn't, because we were able to find twelve local jobs. That volunteering is the hard game to, to encourage, so we had to budget in staff, and we were able to hire twelve local people to do. Track setup, teardown, um, and then we got most of our supplies, uh, we supported six local businesses in terms of. You know, parkland buying the safes and renting equipment from our local businesses, um, buying our recruits for the athlete area from Ask You. So, you know, try to keep the money that we were investing right back into local, so, very, very happy to be able to do that.
Awesome, Carly, um, just a couple of comments from maybe before we move on, um. I love, I love Braden's Explore Sick Moose, uh, videos, he does such a brilliant job of those, and I love the webcams. The webcams are so key to our community and just people looking at, if I could ask one thing, starting right now, right this very, very minute today. Is the interior is not filled with smoke, so we need to blast that out on everyone's social media, all the restaurants, all the businesses that. Because you're watching TV and they go, the interior of B C, so they're frightening people away again, so. If we could send messages to the media, it's to be very, very specific and pinpoint places that are in distress. And those that aren't are still open for business, and we rely on that business for our businesses to grow and our community to grow, so. If we could reach out or do some sort of campaign to stress that right now, because it's beautiful out, and I'm hearing, you know. Mumbling, so, um, yeah, if we could do that, check our webcams, whatever. Other thing is, Carly, I think, and you hear it all the time, and I hear it all the time, and I'm hearing it a bit from the houseboat companies this year. Um, eh, the market's a little soft for them, where it should be like super strong, because people aren't going to the U S to vacation, they're coming here. Those businesses bring a ton of business with them, but we don't advertise Hospital Capital Canada as much as we used to. We used to all the time use Hospital Capital Canada, and although we've got it on our signs, we, we're just not using it in social media enough, so. I think, because I hear it a lot too, when I'm out and about, um, and taking those kids off, Bob had a, a group. You know, on a houseboat yesterday, and they just, we're beside themselves, so I think we really need to capitalize back on that, that tagline. Um, to get folks back into town here. Hey, all right, thank you, Carly, that's awesome, um, great job, thank you. Okay, moving right along, um, Daryl, you want to share some Sick Moose dog park stuff?
Sure.
Yay.
Okay, so we had a committee of the whole meeting on the twenty-eighth, so last, just the end of last month. And in that committee of the whole meeting, we had two delegates come forward, two different delegations, one was Isabel Diedrichs. With Sheena Graham from What the Wolf, and they came forward and they were requesting some dog behavior signs get put at the, at the dog park. Uh, so we heard that out, and we got, we got a draft of, or proof of what they wanted to put up for the signage. Uh, the very next delegation was, was, uh, was Mary Ann Easton. And she came asking for a small, uh, fifty by fifty small dog park within the bigger dog park. So, we kind of took that all in, and then I was asked to see what I could maybe put together and bear with you, so. Uh, yeah, these are the, the two items. This was the sign that was presented by, by the two ladies at the beginning, captains worked some magic with this sign, so we'll, we'll look at it in a bit. Uh, so obviously, the, the dog park now is, as it's laid out, has the fencing along the red area. Uh, and that's how it exists, we've got the one black gate where everybody goes in, and then it's obviously, well, probably the. The biggest, best dog park anywhere, it's two football fields, you have access to the river here as well, so.
Amazing.
Utilized as well, so it is, it is well-used, I see it all the time, there's people parked there. Uh, this is a location that we picked out, thinking this would serve the needs of the small, dark dog park, uh. People that wanted to use it, we could still use the existing gate, uh, there is an eight-foot in-ground garbage can right by that gate, so. Once we fenced that area, just zoom in a little bit further, that's the word the captain did on the signage, we broke it into two footers. So that we can do more of an information board as you walk in, so I'll zoom in a little bit, so the big behavior signage would be at the front. Right in this opening area, we'd still have the one access for everybody to come into the park, that eight-foot garbage can is right there. We would put another little man gate on the small dog park, right on that side, so the dogs could stay apart from the big dogs. Um, we also have an opportunity here to do some river access signage if we wanted to, right at the front. To lead people to that little trail at the back. So, uh, they'd asked for twenty-five hundred square feet, this works out to twenty-four hundred square feet, I've looked at it, it's, it should suffice. Uh, and the cost would come in around eight thousand dollars for all of it, so the fencing, which would be consistent with the black four-foot fence we have there now. Uh, a couple of gates, one for maintenance, one for a man gate, and then the signage, so it'd be around eight thousand, we, we do have money in the parks budget, if. Counsel wishes to, to pursue that.
Counsel McCabe.
We bring the sign up again, please, the modified sign?
Sure.
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I like the idea, and I think it's money well spent.
Okay, Counsel Richardson, Counsel Bailey.
Uh, through the chair, Daryl, this is awesome, and I mean, we're a dog community, we got lots of dogs, um. The only thing I would ask, and I know it's going to cost you lo- lots of money, is that double gate at the front, so when you go into the bigger cities. Um, there's the first gate, and there's like a little vestibule, and then there's a second day gate, so you can actually park your dog in there. Um, and what's happening now still is dogs know how to open the gate, or Grandma's coming in and she forgets her keys, and then the. So if, if we have the money to put that second, and I'm more than happy to come meet you, I worked with the City of Vancouver for years on dog parks. Um, if we can put in that little vestibule, it's just, it, it's like a little porch, so you come in your first gate. Then you're in a little holding pen, which is literally two of these desks wide at the front. It doesn't, we don't need it for the small dog park, we need it for that first gate.
So just, so I'm clear, we have this existing gate?
Yeah.
You're saying a little end area right off of there?
Yeah, and then it's got a second gate in there, so when I walk in, it, it's just like walking into your porch or walking in between the two doors, so it's gated. But what that does is, is a holding space, right? Or if your dog gets through one gate, it doesn't get through the other gate. Um, and, and this is what they do in all the big city dog parks, and it just, it creates, or I then get there, I unload my dog, I put him in there, and then I'm like, oh. Buffy hates Fifi, and then I've got a little bit of space in between that, right? Or I'm, my keys are dropping and I'm trying to get my coffee together, it, it, it's, it'll stop dogs on roads. It'll stop fights, it's going to give someone more, um, time if they see a dog that they don't want to encounter, then they can turn around and leave. Instead of walking in and being in the middle of it, so it's more fencing, I don't know if it's five hundred bucks, but if we're doing it, that would be a massive, um. Upgrade to that park.
So, just a suggestion, I mean, we, we can pull this off as proposed. And, and see how it works, my concern, uh, Counsel Rich is. Uh, I've, I've got a number of signs now, but I've just, we've gone away from a four-by-eight to four independent posts. But another penned area, uh, we're going to have other signage in here too, and I've got guys that got to get mowers in there, they've got to read everything we put in. So it just, it just compounds the amount of work.
And we don't have a big, like a, like a, a machine gate, we just have a people gate.
Got a machine gate here, so we come in across here, you can see that tr- that trail, that's how they, they'll cut out and then they'll bulk out the dog park. I'm going to need to put another machine gate on that little park already.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
See, thanks.
Why don't we give this a go, and if, if, if counselors that are.
It, it just, people have already asked for it, and it's, if we're upgrading, it's actually a really great thing, but I'm really happy and impressed with what you're doing too. I love the signage, and I love that we've got the ability to have a small dog park within our park, so I.
Yeah, that's perfect, and it's just taxpayers' money, right? The more we add on to this, it, it doesn't cost you, Daryl, or probably worse. It costs all of us, so we just, if we've got that money allocated, I don't know if we want to, um, grow it. Maybe just give it a, yeah, I agree, just give it a shot this year. What's going on? And you're right, it is a beautiful dog park, because, you know what, you get to go down, take your dog through, and go down to one. oh, what, you get to go down, take your dog through, and go down to one of the nicest beaches on the river that there is. And the dogs get to enjoy that, right? It's wonderful. Council Bailey?
Yeah, I think the plan is great. And it's good. I mean, I think it's stuff that the community's going to really enjoy. And for eight thousand bucks, I think that's a pretty good bang for a buck when it comes to recreation. So and I do understand what Council Rich is saying about the double, I they do have them in Vancouver. It's just kind of so you can shove your dog in there, and then there's another dog, and it won't kind of run out. But probably, this is good just to try. And if there's an ongoing problem where we have that, then you could always probably just add another gate in. But I think it's a really good plan on very short order sometimes.
Sure, sure. Just one thing, I'll throw in. We may see a little more traffic there. So there is a bit of a plan. We'll look at filling in the ditch like we did on the north side.
Yeah.
We expand the park a little bit.
Great. That makes sense. Great.
Really good. Very good.
All right. Council Bushel.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, you want, that's.
Sure, do you want to make one?
Make that motion. And it wouldn't probably hurt for Siobhan to go over, meet Daryl there and just kind of, maybe for next year, you know, talk about where you're talking for maybe next year's budget or something like that. But I'd make that motion to.
To put the small dog park in. Siobhan's going to second that. Any more conversation? Okay, that's all in favor. Barry. Thanks, Daryl. Good plan.
Quick turnaround, too.
Yeah, very.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to strategic priorities. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss about on our strategic priorities right now? Then we're going to go into our public input. Fifteen minutes. Oh, sorry, no, hearing council reports. Guys, let's see what you've been up to. Council Evans, let's start with you.
Welcome to summer. I just want to give a couple of shout outs, if I can, to community folks first, the twenty anchors for giving a houseboat day yesterday to over twenty international students from all over the world that are no doubt going to put their videos on TikTok for all Sycamore's. And also to the Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue guys that piloted the vessel and protected the kids and use it as a training exercise. And to Owen and Tyler, who were the lifeguards. So that was a really great thing for Sycamore's and a life-changing event for those kids.
Yeah, that's awesome. Good to hear. Council Rich.
Well, through the chair, yeah, just congratulations to our grads two thousand twenty five. What a great class. And looking forward to seeing where they all end up. And then just spent some time down at the pump track this weekend. So that was fun to watch, too.
Thank you. Council Bushel.
Yeah, no, I've been kind of busy at work in and out a lot. So I missed the pump, I didn't pop by the pump track. I was here in town, but I had to work that day. It was kind of, wasn't as busy as last year, but it was busy, you know, it was looking like they were having fun. I attended a Sneeze meeting last night. They're busy, you know, gathering all their information, photos and water. Still working on the head lease. Working on the head lease for them. Yeah, yeah. What else did I, oh, I had a meeting with a rail trail owner who has had a lot of people going through his yard. And yeah, some concerns there. So I told him to call the phone number on the signs and report it to the rail trail owners. And hopefully he'll get some action. I mean, that's what I've been busy working.
Thank you. Council Bailey.
I've just been busy working, done a few meetings here and there, but mostly just getting ready for hopefully what is going to be a very busy summer.
Okay, Council Beach.
Yeah, well, I, of course, you know, attended the FCM conference on our behalf. And that was really, really great, informative. I just, I just wanted to say that, I mean, all of the things that are critical to us are consistent across the nation, housing and mental health and drug addiction and all those things. What I, what I found was interesting that, well, and I'm just a keen ear, I guess, there was no mention of our, the progress of the muscle, which is, which is in the middle, it's halfway through the nation and it's threatening us. So I ventured to bring that up because I felt that FCM should be advocated about that. They advocate for us federally and there was no mention. So I did bring that up. And Louise Wallace Richmond thanked me for doing that. It was really good. I, yeah, so that was all. I was kind of shocked. I was expecting that to be a national issue because it seems pretty important to us. But I guess, and the housing, of course, everybody is struggling with that. So it was, it was great. Had a, took a study tour that I thought was about two zero net energy communities, like side by side. So Gat and No against Ottawa. And yeah, it wasn't overwhelming. It was telling you how you can capture heat from a tissue industry, which is upstream. So it was about capturing the heat from a tissue industry and distributing it then into the residential area. Well, we could do that with arenas. We could capture heat from arenas. So that was, that was kind of interesting and underwhelming because I think I was expecting a lot more. Plus, they have the Ottawa River and their hydropower dam on the river. So they're getting their hydro there. Anyways, it was, it was interesting. I had much bigger expectations of what I was going to hear, knew that we could, we could consider. But anyways, it was, it was a great conference. I really, really enjoyed it. And I am currently attending the Rural Health Conference. And I have to tell you that at the end of the day yesterday, I heard from Williams Lake, and we already know that Merritt is doing some incredible stuff with their wood pulp and their slash and their different things. Williams Lake is taking burn, they're taking their burned forest, and they're actually grinding and chipping, and they're sending to pulp, and they're doing all sorts of things with all this wood. Now, I know I brought up about slash from the, from our Crown Forest, our forest. And could we not be doing something with that? So I was so excited to hear that these other communities were actually taking this wood dirty and with charcoal and doing something with it. So this is coming back to us. We're going to be talking about that. So that was pretty cool.
Thanks.
And there was a whole bunch today. I just can't remember it all right now.
Council McCabe.
I don't have anything to report. I'm just enjoying the summer.
I have, yeah, attended, sorry, go ahead, Pam.
One more thing. I have to say, and I'm going to give you a paper invite. We are celebrating the hundred and third year of Ellen Verigien. She's actually turned on the sixth, but we're having a celebration tea. I just want to bring that up. We have at the lodge a resident who turned a hundred and three in June. And that's pretty amazing. So we're holding a tea for her. I'll give you an invite and hopefully you can try and pop by and just congratulate her. She's aiming for a hundred and five.
Earl. Okay, so before FCM, I attended the two-day strategy priorities, strategic priority session with the CSRD for the next two years. And then, of course, the new board will take over and those will probably be changed and they'll be heading in a different direction. So super glad that we met two days during that. But anyway, so then I attended the opening to the, I haven't been here since, RCM SARS Boathouse, and was honored and grateful that we have such a service protecting the shoe shop in Mary Lake cottage owners and boaters and house boaters. And thank Bruce, Rob, and Pat for their years of commitment to achieve what we've achieved in this community, and a space to protect those vessels for a quick response and deployment. And thank you to all of the volunteers that volunteer selflessly to hop on that lifeboat in the middle of the night and go out and protect people. So it was, it was amazing. And we're fortunate to have those guys. Attended the FCM in Ottawa, and the theme was Stronger Together, which it was truly the message through the whole thing and the Canadian spirit, Canadian spirit actually shone through very bright, and the message of working together as Canadians, breaking down provincial barriers was big, breaking down municipal barriers was also key, and sharing ideas and being creative together was definitely a message. The message, one of the messages from municipalities was loud and clear, and which is, if the message is to work together as municipalities and provincial, we're hoping that the two major parties work together and do what's best for Canada and not political agendas. So that was definitely a clear message. And taking out some of the red tape and some of the costs to be trimmed to move projects forward. And because Canadians can no longer afford to continue spending at the rate that they are, we just, it's just not sustainable. Another big message was the frustration in our justice system, which is basically no longer a justice system. It's just a legal system where, and message right across Canada, where criminals are continually released back onto the streets, and most of them are repeat offenders. So we're not getting anywhere with that. The number of repeat offenders is astronomical compared to new offenders. And bail reform is, needs to be revisited. Canadians are, all of them shaking their heads right now over how many rights that our criminals have. And it's clear that it needs to be addressed immediately. So I think we have a resolution tonight that we're looking at, too. And that was the message from all municipalities was can we please put together, because it's going to come from us and go up. That changes need to be made. So the catch and release back to is major problem all over Canada with archaic tracking systems. So they're catching and releasing, they're going into another province, they are breaking the law, and the systems aren't fast enough, or they're too archaic to get people into the system for the next province. So that needs to be addressed as well. And the message from listening to RCMP and presenters was the RCMP, men and women who sign up to protect and serve, they're being demoralized by a system that's not serving to help them. So that system should be supporting them as they are protecting us. And it's not supporting them.
Is there, sorry, is there a recruitment issue because of that?
No, there's, the recruitment is, is, is strong, but it's still, it's demoralizing for those that are serving. So I guess the message there is please light up, lock up, put your stuff away, make sure you're taking care of, you know, your personal items and your home, so that just tiditer until we get some resolution, some bigger resolution. So Pam didn't mention this, but we also toured the big house, the House Commons, and watched Bill get passed. So that was pretty exciting to sit, I sat in the throne. And yeah, I got photos. It's interesting to get to Ottawa was interesting because, I mean, that's a space where all the big decisions are made, right or wrong, good or bad right now. But it was just a nice space to visit. So and then I took a couple hours out and toured the War Museum in Ottawa. If you haven't been there, it's simply amazing, simply amazing, and a must see if you get to Ottawa. Definitely humbling and makes you very proud of the men and women that served to protect us. Connected with a hotelier, so I've passed that on to Carly and Dean. And hopefully, we will be seeing some success there. Attended a CSRD Cow meeting on the fifth. Most agenda items were not uni-related. And this is fun fact, Bianca and I met with Telus and Lead Corps, which is going to be interesting for you, Ian, any business owners. And it is a true story, true story. You're here first. Pure Fiber is coming to Sycamore's in two thousand twenty six. So by the first quarter of two thousand twenty six, the infrastructure would be laid in and they will be overlaying the lines. So it is a project and it's coming soon to a neighborhood near you. So.
Nice.
Holding lines. But that's pretty exciting. And they're pretty dedicated. Telus is working with Lead Corps and with Connect Fiber, Connect Fiber, is that what the business name is? So you will be seeing some stuff going on, but it is, it's coming. So that's pretty exciting for us is, there's a lot of great things happening in Sycamore's. And we should all be so very, very proud of that all this is going on. And so they're going to start to go over the structure and build it and work with Canton so that they can share the information that will, their communications team will be sharing with our communications team. I went to the graduation on Friday to address our up and coming talents. And it was the biggest bursary year ever, fifty K. So in bursaries were handed out. It was simply amazing and great for, you know, all the kids got, you know, that were heading into, you know, careers or fields where, yeah, got something to get on their way. So that was really good. And I just want to say, while we're in this space, I just, the high risk of fires, and I just want to remind people, and I really want to use more social media, please don't throw, throw your safety nets out the windows. A lot of these, here but the fires that are being started and some of them that are destroying communities are manmade. They're, they're human error. So if you don't need a fire, don't have a fire, like, let's just be really, really diligent and careful. And we don't have, we don't allow fireworks in Sycamore's, so please stay away from that, too, while we're tinder dry. And back to what I said to Carly, having media stop telling people that it's smoky here and, and people shouldn't be coming here. So that needs to stop. The, I just want to touch on the bridge trespassing issue. I will, not the bridge, the rail trail trespassing, going across other people's properties. And yes, they can form a sign. But Dean, maybe you want to touch on that. There was a bit of, there's being scheduled.
Maybe scheduled with Mayor as well as Rota with CSRD staff about that issue as well as the issues with parking.
Okay, so that's, we will, we'll get on that sooner than later. And we're also, I mean, Council had mentioned this last council meeting, community unsightly, unsightly properties in the community. So the campaign will start again. I think there is one every year that we send out to get people focused on making sure that their empty lots trimmed up and cleaned. So that's going to be rolling out pretty quick, I understand. And just I'd like to take a moment to recognize Corey Miller, who is retiring after more than thirty years of teaching preschool in Sycamore's. And Corey has helped shape some early learning experiences of many families in our community. And so congratulations, Corey, and thank you for all you've given to the young people in Sycamore's over the past three decades. And we wish you a very happy and well-deserved retirement. And I know she's not here, but I just wanted to make sure that we made note of that. And that's it for me. That's a lot. That's a lot of talking. Okay, do we have anyone online that has any questions? No? Okay, well, then let's carry on. And let's call the Cow meeting, let's adjourn the Cow meeting at three twenty nine on June the eleventh. Council Bushel, Council Evans, all in favor? Thanks. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll.